Good evening, welcome to LaPierce Community Schools Board of Education meeting for October 3rd. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Warren, I understand you have guests, can you go ahead and lead us?
Yes, we do, if you could please stand before the flag. We have troops 7663, I'm sorry, 76663. They're from our Chicago Girl Scouts troops. We're real proud of these troops. Do you have names we can add?
We have 21.
Twenty-one students. But anyway, please find your ladies or inter-representers. Go ahead.
Hallelujah. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ash Schickler, I belong to the school family who loves me. Today and every day I love, form friendships, excel others, make everyday matter, have integrity, always love to learn, you, me, us, we, Chicago family.
Thank you, girls, in seat. Tonight, we will begin with our presentation schools, Mr. Longory.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This time, it's my pleasure to reintroduce Mr. Scott Warren, Principal of Chicago Elementary, to share with us an update on one of our board goals. I believe he's also brought some staff in as well to help present. Scott?
Thank you. Major, do you want to share? We want to, tonight specifically, Kelly Engel and Amy Duncan, two of our learning coaches, are going to help you present. Specifically, we're looking at board goal three and it's to develop and sustain quality collaboration, collaborative processes that improve teacher performance and student achievement. But of that goal, we want to really talk about benchmark 31B, which is 100% of administrators will participate in district instructional rounds and assist teacher teams for its high-functioning professional learning communities. And it's kind of a mouthful. But what, in essence, I know Bob kind of shared a little bit about, I think Bob Downey last time, shared a little bit about instructional rounds. What we really want to do is to give you our experience, because we first began these instructional rounds last year with the Reading Now Network when they came to us last spring. We tend to give you an overview of how this process has affected our school and it is affecting our school, because it's still relatively in its infancy. Because we didn't, the Reading Now Network came and did instructional rounds in our building was last May, right after M-Step was done. So, we really haven't, we've had a chance to really look at it, but not really implement some of the things. But anyway, since then, we want to share with you kind of what we were at with it. And I want to give you a little background on instructional rounds. Actually, the idea of instructional rounds came from the medical profession, where physicians do instructional rounds. And what some people have done is they've adapted this process to education. And basically, it is, it's where educational leaders, practitioners, they develop, share understanding of what high-quality instruction looks like. And that's the purpose of the rounds. Now, you can, really, you can use these rounds in a lot of particular ways, evaluating just about anything in the school. But what I'm going to have Kelly explain to you is exactly what we're doing as administrators in this district and what the Reading Now Network focuses on.
Can I have a quick press? You and I have issues with technology.
Do the dance on the floor.
I forget, is there any ones?
Just the thing, where's the thing?
One more.
Okay, so now that I know the technology piece, so, you know, this happens every year. So, we get to talk about lots of different things tonight that you probably don't have any experience with. Some of the things, essential literacy practices, you might not know what that is. Bright spot schools, you might not have any experience with that. And so, we're going to give you a little bit of background on what those things are first, sort of like a history lesson. So, the way all of these instructional rounds that we know came to be is that it sort of started at a sad, sad place in Michigan's history, where back in 25, we dropped to the 41st place in the nation in terms of literacy. I believe we were at 28th at one point, and then we've been dropping ever since then. So, because of our huge drop in literacy, Duncan Schneider decided that he needed to do something about it, and he introduced PA 306, so public reading bill, third grade reading bill, he introduced. And so, because of this third grade reading bill, all of these educators are like, oh my gosh, what do we do? We're going to have a whole state full of third graders being retained in 2020. So, a group of educators got together and they started working on the essential instructional practices in early literacy. So, all of these great minds in literacy came together and they created this document. And it's something that we use all the time at the elementary level. Basically, it's sort of a every child, every day, every classroom description for how we want our kids to do better in literacy. So, in the midst of all of these things going on at the state level, at Schickler, we had some huge growth. And we're super excited, because we really got our built-in. We started focusing on family and culture and literacy and making sure that those were all really important in our building. And so, our score started to improve. So, luckily, we were named one of the bright spot schools, because we beat the odds.
It wasn't luck.
It wasn't luck, it was very intentional. But we were very fortunate to be recognized in that manner. So, because what in mind is up next to all of these other schools that have the same socioeconomic status as us, we beat them, basically. It's sort of like we were the dark horse in the race, and so, we were able to beat the odds. So, there's no wonder about instructional rounds. So, there's a group called the Reading Now Network. And it's a group of administrators, and Scott's going to talk about that a little bit, but basically, other districts want to know what we're doing. And so, the Reading Now Network was sort of created to go around and figure out what are these bright spots was doing, so we can go back and replicate it in our own districts. And that is where instructional rounds came from, for us. So, they were coming, they were going to look at our building through the lens of these essential practices. Basically, they were going to look at the same document, they were going to dig into it and find out what from this document, what are these kind of essential practices we were doing really, really well that might be affecting these fantastic schools. And so, what developed as a result of knowing that they were coming, and we started to consider how to prepare for these visitors coming around, there was lots of conversation. And the conversations with teachers became, well, I'd really like to know how we're doing before they get here. So, we want to, could we do our own version? Could we do our own version of M-Step, for example? And we said, absolutely. And so, that's where that came from, it came directly from those conversations that the teachers were having.
I have to say, it actually came from these four right here. It was a lunchroom, I went to the lunchroom and they were talking about it.
Because definitely, they'd be randomly seated, the audience.
Yeah. And these guys were at the table talking about that. This is, and the mini rounds evolved from it.
Yes, absolutely. So, how do we prepare for the mini rounds is basically, we put some, we reserve some substitutes, three days of subs, we put teachers into mixed grade level, small groups of teens. They've been around to every classroom, every teacher's classroom, at least 10 minutes in each room, doesn't matter what was going on, what was happening, just to get a little bit of a snapshot. They were real quiet while they were kind of observing, and they were observing through the lens of the same document that the Reading Now Network was going to be looking at. So, it gave us a chance to really dig into that document as well, to kind of get an idea of what it looked like and sounded like in our own classrooms. We documented any evidence that we found with these practices actually happening and occurring. And so, at the very end, we took everybody's data that they collected and put it in one large document, where we were able to look at together as a staff, look at all that data and say, okay, we are going to get, we got a chance to see how we're doing. And we're in the areas that we see all kinds of evidence, where it's really clear that we're knocking out of the park. And so, that was very clear after taking a look at everybody's data. And then, we looked at the areas that weren't as clear, and we knew we had an opportunity to for some next steps. Along with that, I think there were conversations, teachers during the debriefing enjoyed getting a chance to see the vertical progression, you know, they got to see some of the foundational work that was happening in the grade levels below them, that led to what they were working on, or even above them, you know, where something they started progress. And there were a lot of unintended positive consequences that came out of the mini instructional rounds. It gave every teacher the opportunity, and there were lots of seeds planted. So, we might have been looking at this through the instructional rounds lens, but there were lots of conversations that stemmed from, hey, I noticed this great thing you were doing in your classroom, can you tell me more about that? You know, we have all these experts in our building, and they got an opportunity to learn from each other. And that was really great. And probably, one of the coolest things is that you would hear teachers go, this is the best day ever. Like, they never get to go on each other's classrooms, they're always using their own kit. So, to see what the colleagues are doing is, I guess, a golden gift for them to get. So, it was so beneficial.
So...
There we go. So, we talked a little bit about the Reading Now Network, and just before I get into it, I need the instructional rounds, which is the way I think I described it to staff is, when you, because we've just seen snippets, and when we go in and see lots of snippets, it's like, you ever see those pictures, like the entire school, there are individual little pictures, and then when you step back, it makes a big picture? That's exactly what instructional rounds are. You know, we see all these little snippets, but then when we put them up, we, you know, hopefully, it paints a picture that we can move forward with. So, that's kind of the, the other piece that, it really does take some network and building some trust and some, because we're putting people out of their comfort zones a little bit, especially having their own colleagues come in and observe them. We really point out, this is not a evaluative, and it's difficult, even as administrators to go in there and take our evaluation hands off, because that's not what it's about, you know, it's about noticing things, you know, which is actually different. So, anyway, when the Reading Now Network, Matt, I think you were part of that, and originally it started in, sorry, originally it started in the west side of the state, but then, as it caught on, well, let me just say, what they were looking at, there's surprise administrators and key people from neighboring counties, collecting data from bright spot schools in a nonevaluated way, which I just mentioned, and then focusing on those K3 literacy essentials. And then, Region Five kind of caught on to this, which is Genesea here on LaPierce, San Jose, St. Clair, and Tascola Counties, and they joined in the Reading Now Network. And so, from, that's when we were identified as one of the bright spot schools. So, I had the opportunity to go to a vocab elementary, which was in, Yale, that's part of Yale. And Michelle and I were able to go over there and participate in instructional rounds over there, just to kind of get a feel for what were happening. It was a great experience, we learned an awful lot. And more than anything, we really began to familiarize ourselves with those K3 essentials that we're looking for, which is another side benefit to all of this that we're doing.
So, administrators don't just come in willy-nilly, you do an instructional round, there's a specific framework that's involved, so that way, they can ensure that everything that's happening in one school at one instructional round, if something happened in another building, so that way, they can really share commonality between them. So, the framework is, every elementary college is a Harvard model, and I won't go into what that is. Secondary, they experience something called linking walks. But the coolest thing is, we got to experience just the beginning portion of it, where we got to actually present our building to the other administrators. And that is such a fun thing to do, when we get to talk about our building, because we're so proud of ourselves. So, we get to build the background, and then we send the groups off for 15 minutes into each classroom, they take their notes and their notes in their room, then they all come back and we start debriefing, and there's a picture of one of the administrators with the 10 essential practices, and people start putting their sticky notes up with their notes things on which instructional practice they noticed. And then, they get to present their results. The coolest thing, in addition to us being able to present our buildings, is that we get to come back in and we get to hear our glows. And our glows are the successful things that they spotted in our building. And then, they have a time where they get to ask these questions, things that maybe they were a little confused about, and so, we get to answer them, and then we get our next step work. And then, there's sort of a wrap-up at the end, and then, we get our real, you know, thing that we're going to take back and do with our building. Amy's going to talk about the benefits of the instructional rounds, but I can just tell you, it's really guiding where we're going now, we feel like we have a direction.
So, how does this come home? So, we, after Michelle and I went there, somewhere in that realm, they began to organize that the district administrators would be participating in instructional rounds as an opportunity for us to get in each other's buildings, because just like, you know, teachers don't get into classrooms, I hardly ever get into the other buildings, especially this instruction. And so, it, you know, what a great, it was just a, it's been so far, a great idea. We just had our instructional rounds at TURL, Oliver Beep ago, and we followed the exact same protocol as the Reading Now.
We did TURL.
TURL, and Schickler.
It was at TURL.
It was at TURL.
You follow us from Schickler.
And Schickler.
And Scott's been the principal at almost every elementary.
Yeah. Over the in there.
Come on, some slack.
Fairly, you're here.
But one of the real, the neat benefits that we saw, that is just, when we have it up here, is the vertical and horizontal collaboration. I'll give you a real quick example, I was chatting with one of the middle school principals, and they couldn't leave the reads stamina that are some of our elementary kits were doing. And so, I had a conversation with them about, well, you know, they were saying that, you know, one of their, she had a conversation with her teachers, and they were talking about 10 minutes and 12 minutes where, you know, the teachers moving for independent read stamina. And so, you know, my comment was, and this is a conversation, by the way, that would never happen outside of this process, was that, well gee, our benchmark is 30 minutes at kindergarten. So, but, so that's part of the vertical collaboration, you know, she would, they would never know that, you know what I mean? And I really look forward to our next instructional rounds, when we're going to be at a middle school, to be able to see that whole piece. So, it really does, and then when I was at TURL, we, you know, you're able to see, you walk into these, all these rooms, you see just some amazing things going on, and you're able to have conversations, it really does promote a lot of conversations outside of the actual instructional rounds process, that you can take back to your own staff and to be able to begin to maybe tweak or influence some of these ideas that you see in addition to helping them see what their next steps were.
So, the benefits, we kind of alluded to as we've been talking to, without really focusing our building, being really clear and cohesive. And so, here are some of the things that we found was really beneficial in this process. Particularly, particularly with the mini instructional rounds in our own building, that was really very, very powerful for all of us, having teachers observing colleagues was huge. We don't get that opportunity, we need to really develop that, because we should be, there's so many experts in our building, like I said, we have great teachers, and they should be learning from each other. It's given us a real clear focus for our PD for the entire year. So, all of the data that we collected really showed us, like I said, things that are doing really well and things that we can use as our next steps to grow our building. And there's a definite ripple effect of change, and it starts very, very small, but it goes beyond our building as it's starting to occur with the LCS administrators. Really, it's given us a chance to really dig in and get to get familiar with the essentials, it's a really needy, important document, but it's something that we are continuing to take the lights off every time we dig into it. And it's really helping us to stay focused on those, and again, providing us with a wonderful, impactful department. Yeah, so, one other thing about the literacy essentials document is, it's really impactful when you think about the idea that everything that's in this little spiral notebook are things that should happen with every child in every classroom every single day. And so, when you look at it like that, it sort of shakes your thinking, oh, I don't do that, or I'm really good at that. So, that's where all of these instructional rounds help us really focus and getting ready on this stuff. Before we leave, we want to share our instructional rounds with you. So, let me pass out the results from each of ours. You'll see that the top part is pink, and the top part are our mini instructional rounds. So, there were two sections, one, St. Clair Evan, and then West Clair. All went to green, this is when we had the Reading Now Network come true. And so, you can see all of those glows or those successful things that they were able to see. And then, they went a little deeper with us, they had patterns among classrooms, and contrast, which was really interesting to me, because I'm on that, I'm thinking, what is a practical concept here? And on the backside of that, there were questions and wonderings as well. And then, you can go to the next step work, so they determined that we made more work on vocab, and also using assessment to drive our instruction. And then, of course, to celebrate our successes more. The blue is all from when we had our LCS administrators, and you'll also see the next steps. And down at the bottom, in the sort of orange color, we found the commonalities, which was cool, because when, you know, two different groups come through and they say, we need to work on vocab, and using assessment to drive instruction, we really should do it. So, and then the other areas that we want to focus on as well. So, it's really given us some clarity in our work, and we're just kind of want to go and tend others' spots. So, these are the commonalities for the, Kelly Brown, the Andy Elementary Round. So, the Reading Now Network and the LCS administrators are the top two, the essential nine, and then the other ones, those were areas that when we did our mini instructional rounds, so they were a little different than, I mean, I'll be honest, we, there's a difference between having vocabulary posters in your classroom and being intentional. So, we focused on the word intentional, and we don't feel like we have it. So, as learning coaches, our teachers, multiple different, they didn't identify it as a need, so, you know, we just didn't see it when we were in our instructional rounds.
We were also, we did, we went first, and we were just digging into the essential practices and looking at our data. So, there could have been a lot of different ways, we chose to look at the data, but based on the velocity of the building, like those were, those are pretty important essentials that we want to make sure to address.
Oh, and the other unique thing, all the members of COLA participated, and you participate in these rounds, and I wrote down several of the key noticeings for me, and one of them, Kelly mentioned, was the commonality between, you know, a group of essentially strangers to our district, and then administrators who are a bit more familiar, but, and I believe Amy mentioned the word prescription, that you leave the buildings, they're left with very precise, focused things that they can work on. It is not, you know, a six-hour field of session, yeah, there are, there are noticeings that are positive, but really, the facilitation of this, and that's one thing I wanted to mention, is that the ISB, because of LaPierce leadership and the Reading Now Network, and because of the Schickler Foundation as a bright spot school, we volunteered to really be a leader in the county and region on this instructional rounds process, and as a result, they have really come to the table to support us, covering subs and paying for someone to come and facilitate this process for us. And the process of facilitating and extracting your noticeings and what you observe, and then putting it on paper as a recommendation for the building, I was blown away, because we're answering all these questions, and we're making all these decisions, and I'm thinking kind of skeptically in the course of the process, okay, what is this, what's it going to end up being, right? And you walk away, and you're hearing it, and, oh my gosh, this is the same thing that this other group mentioned, so we need to focus on that. And they can take it back and really drill down into something that's going to improve instructional practice in the building. It was a remarkable process, and every single one of our buildings is going to get the opportunity to do this this year, which is, no other district is going to get every building, and we are, they're very, we're the leader in this. We have other building, other buildings, other districts asking us, hey, we sent a couple of our teachers over there, you know, getting this, and it's really driving, it's really driving, and Schickler, you know, they mentioned this adaptation from the medical model that instructional rounds was born. You know, we hear all the time in education, man, run that place like a business, run that place like a business. There are practices in other industries that have a great deal of value, and that, that one in medical profession is the entire, it's the quintessential idea of collaboration, right? 10 doctors working on your face is better than one, right? You know, injecting the latest and greatest and having debate about, you know, the plan of care. This is the exact same philosophy, right? You get a bunch of expert teachers in your room, making observations, and then going through a facilitated process to help prescribe for you a way to improve. I mean, come on, I mean, we as administrators always said, I can't wait to be a teacher again, because just by observing other teachers that we never got the chance to do when we were actual classroom teachers, has, would already make me a better teacher. Now, do the observation coupled with an actual process that can then give you a prescription for improvement, not just kind of this break of lending, wouldn't this be great, we won't call high school, you know, 20 years ago when I started teaching, they just gave us the keys to the classroom and said, hey, good luck.
Here's your book.
Here's your book, figure it out.
Teach that.
And it hasn't been that many years ago, many of the members on this board were sitting there when we were discussing, how do we make this a learning organization, which is kind of ironic, because rules, right? But the learning organization was within the teachers, the administrator, how do you make that, you know? And we sit and listen to what you're doing, and you keep coming back with more, it's like it hasn't stopped. And you're getting these best practices, you're integrating these best practices, it's not just integrating though, but it's, it's like your leadership style in how you integrate. You know when to take somebody out of their comfort zone and how to walk them through and get them there, it's a big part of that. So, this culmination of events that you are doing, you have built this momentum, it's like a wave now, I just see this just keep going now. I might see something a little bit different, I have a feeling you've only hit the tip of the iceberg, I really do. I think when you start, you saw what you gained, but you're going to look, take a step back and look and say, but there's more, and you're going to get higher and higher. I bet you never thought you could be where you are today. In fact, there's a lot of people that thought you couldn't be where you are today.
I would argue it is business, because all businesses are doing TQM, total quality management, this is quality improvement.
Absolutely.
And digging into data, you're making data analysis, huge. If you don't look at the data, you're not going to survive, and that's kind of what...
And the hard part, that's a great point, you started with the TQM analogy, the hard part in our business is identifying, okay, which data to look at, then what you have, how to actually use it. But the definitions, and I love Kelly, like you started out defining some of these terms, because you walk into a teacher's classroom and say, okay, we're going to look for student engagement. You get, ask everybody in this room, definition of student engagement, you get a very different answer, right?
It's a quality.
How do I hit, how do I hit target as a teacher? I want to do well in my evaluation, they're all motivated people, they want to do well, they want to be told they're doing a great job. But shouldn't we first define what some of these things are, so the essential literature practice comes into play? Here are the 10 essential practices you can be engaged in, and I wish we're that simple drill, I'm sorry. Practice, it's like, okay, there's a lot of definitions in here. But Schickler, I mean, we can't overstate this, and, you know, they're here right now, so we're talking about them, and we have to say that, you know, administratively speaking, this is a staff that is particularly open to collaboration, particularly open to coaching, right? So, particularly critical of themselves in a good way to say, how can we get better? Because you're not going to improve if it's, stay out of my room, we got this, same old thing. And we also know from the last presentation they've given that they didn't discuss today, but a big reason in our eyes for the shift instructionally in student achievement results has been a direct result of the cultural shift the building has made, where every one of these teachers, you know, owns each kid that walks in there, and there's no, you're these types of kids, or that, those kids, or they, it's, you know, us, we, you know, Schickler, and that is a big piece here.
I think mine explained it real well, but we put that in words like, you guys are doing like a moving target, like literally, once you meet one, you know, aspect that you're moving to the next aspect, and that's quality improvement, I mean, that's what businesses do.
Continual improvement.
Exactly, so it's continually, you know, it's not that we're maintaining sex quo, and staying with this, we're moving on to something else.
What do you think accounts for, what do you think accounts for this culture? Because that's important, if you don't have trust, you don't have people who are open and clairvoyant, you can't do this. So, where do you...
So where does it, how does it begin? How do you change a school into this culture? Or does Scott take all the pride?
I have a couple of answers.
I think that years ago, Scott came and he called him his principal, and he said, if you're not ready to build your streets up in Dayton, you need to leave. And nobody left. That was a good starting point, because it really offended a lot of people, but they didn't go because they cared about their kids. So they were pretty much willing to do anything at all costs to help our kids. And that's the really special kids they're born. So we don't help them to come and become statistician. So it's unfair.
You know, Mike, Nolan, you said something a couple of years ago about why don't we look at the best of what we have here and try to amplify that? And really that's, this is coming, it's coming in fruition.
It is. They took a lot of light work to get, you know, our staff to where they're at. It wasn't just, and it didn't happen overnight, that's the other piece is, you know, we just systematically said, this is what we're going to focus on this year. And one of it is, you know, it's okay to fail, try something, just try something, you know? It's creating an environment that I'd much rather have you go down and, you know, blaze the glory than knock it down at all, you know? I mean, just try something new and keep working and talk to each other about this stuff, you know? And building that capacity over a few years is really, I think, is what helped begin that shift, is second piece here. But what Matt said is really focusing on staff owning all of their kids. And they're not special, like, they're John Edwards, and have special services. You know, that, and I think once the staff really buys into that, we started to see some shift. You know, it's, the kids, it's why I live this morning, I'm walking down the hallway, you know, I've got a fourth grade teacher addressing an issue with a first grader, you know what I mean? It's that kind of thing, it's, she owns that kid.
Scott, it's beyond that now. Michelle and I are sitting down with each of our principals as we do in September, October, and beginning their evaluation process. So each teacher has an initial evaluation with their administrator, and like, why is the principal's ever, I mean, beginning of the year, Michelle and I talk about their goals, what targets they're reining at together, how are we going to know they're growing their buildings? And we are hearing things as a direct result of Schickler's success from our principals, okay? And I mean, like, okay, well, I talked to Scott. He said, this is, these are the types of things we just do during the testing window that are going to help our kids. And I'm not just talking about elementary principals. It's impacting every building, and Scott mentioned it, these are conversations that are happening organically, which is why I went back to this slide, and I love the quote in the top left-hand corner, because it really speaks to what you said, Mike, which is, yeah, we came together at the beginning, right? Good stuff, keeping together is progress, working together is a success, right? So, yeah, it started with what Kelly said in terms of Scott's kind of call to arms. But, you know, that's several years ago at this point, right? We had to progress and grow together. And it gets, this is impacting, I want the staff to hear this, beyond your building and beyond your level. Right, we've got middle-level principals and high school principals saying things like, okay, well, and that's been a barrier in this industry for the two decades I've been in it, which every teacher in the room will nod their head when I say it. Well, you know, the fifth grade teachers, they just prepared our kids, you know, we'd be ready for sixth grade. Eighth grade teachers, heck, upper elementary versus lower elementary, how many years, you know, that dividing line, right? You know, ninth grade teacher saying, gosh, these kids aren't prepared for eighth grade. Now all of a sudden, these administrators get the opportunity to be intimately familiar with these buildings and what's happening instructionally. There's not a middle school principal that left Terrell and left Schickler in the first two sets of instructional rounds that thought to themselves, yeah, these fifth graders are coming to us ill-prepared. Because they, like, the stamina's great. You've got a kindergarten that's reading for 30 minutes and they can't get a sixth grader to sit still, part of that's the old metal stuff, right? But, no, it's happening, there's that vertical connection, it's actually happening. And you see with your own two eyes, it's hard to support a staff or parent group or a culture that says, well, our elementary schools aren't doing it. And so you lose, it's more accountability, because you lose that scapegoat, you lose that crutch. No, they're doing it, you saw it. So now what are you going to do about your building?
That was one of the things that Scott, you know, we remove the excuses. It's easy to say, our kids, 78% of them are grade readers long, that's, which is kind of low right now, by the way. It's easy to put that off and say, they're not going to go home and do their work. So we taught them for eight hours, so what are you going to do? How long do you think it takes?
So this is my eighth year. First year, you were at Murphy. Then Terrell, number two. So this is your five.
I'm not glad we haven't gone.
Can I ask how the students respond as different people wander in and out? Do they hop down there?
Yeah, it's at it first for them, for both, and then they forget you're there, they have no idea that you're there.
So once they, once you walked in, they're...
Yeah, so they're going to look for a minute, and then all of a sudden, you're invisible. It's funny how that works.
We have a lot of people come from the building because we purposefully, years ago, wanted to have every P in our building. It just gave a bad reputation. And so we wanted to show people that, you know, whatever urban legend you've heard, it's not great to visit us. And so our kids are used to having people come through.
It's really remarkable to me, it's like you kind of figure out a recipe that's really working. And, you know, we have all these practices, and they're good, but to feel like you've come up with something like you've kind of hit on, these are all the things we have to do, the essential practices, and the collaborating and observing. And it's really working way beyond what we've done in the past. It is, it's almost like capturing lightning in a bottle, right? It's like, we figured something out. And when you figured it out, you engineered it in a way, you have the data to show. And then you can show it to everybody like a bright spot, right? This is working, that's really remarkable. I mean, you should be very proud of yourselves.
Our belief was, we didn't focus on the data, the data is a byproduct of what we're trying to do. And that's, that was, I think, staff really, that helped a lot, because there's so much pressure on this stuff. You know, I talked to, like, for example, I use Laura Richardson, you know, how do you get your kids to do so well? She was like, just teach them a lot of reading. That's how I carefully test, you know, and she's a fourth grade, this year she's teaching three, four split. But, you know, it's, it's kind of...
How do you get a third grader who's crying because he's struggling and upset, because he's obviously sitting there crying?
We've stayed here for years, I marvel at you guys, and I've seen Scott and Amy together for years now. And now Kelly, what a welcome addition you are in this room. And the thing that I think is really cool is that, you know, I was listening, you just threw out TQM, I said, yeah, TQM becomes a K U D between your both. I mean, you guys are the D, you guys are doing. So we know it, we understand it, but now you're doing, you're putting it in practice. And I really admire you four over there, because, I mean, I admire Scott, because he easily said, they're the ones who put it in place, you know, and it's a lunchtime conversation that gets us going. How awesome is that? You're at lunch, and you're talking about how do we make things better? And the thing that I really like about what you guys have done, and what you've always been able to do at that school since I've been around Schickler, is for you four to be successful at what you're doing, you have to have a little bit of an ego. They do, to be good at anything, you have to have them. But on the other hand, you're willing to put that in your back pocket and let others in and say, you know, even the best of us can learn. And it's amazing that you're able to do that, and that you let other people critique you. And then it translates down the line, the ones that aren't so good go, whoa, if they can learn that, well, imagine what I can do. And to see that put in practice, it's just amazing. We've been saying for years, we have a whole staff built, we have a built-in expertise here. I mean, we just have people that, as a board, sometimes, and I go, I just play my nose in circles. I get a goosebump moment when you guys were describing what you're doing. And I'm not kidding, I mean, I'm sitting up here because I feel really good about what you guys do and what you accomplish at that school. Again, no one ever comes here from Schickler and says, well, we can't do this because of what we have, who we are. No one has thought of it. And you guys come in every year now and say, yeah, we don't even think about that, we're just here to knock it out of our cars. There are no excuses. We just get done, I mean, how refreshing. Our job is to get out of your way. I mean, honestly, it's just, we have to step back. You're, we're thankful you're doing what you're doing, you should be thankful we don't interfere with what you're doing. And we let you do what you do. I mean, it's just amazing to me to see, and the thing that, with Kelly, Amy's always reserved, and she's always reserved. And she'll give you, she'll give you that, at least her own, and here she is, it's going down. She'll give you that little smile when she feels really good about something that you're doing. Kelly was a big smile.
Amy, can you relax? This is a school board meeting, that's hard.
The thing I like about your presentation, I mean, all of you, is that you're communicating all of these things that you're doing, all of these extra steps that you're taking, which we all know translates into all of the extra hours you're putting in, which you can remember just a few years ago, the beating we all took. Because nobody in public education ever worked hard. Well, we know that's not true. And you're doing this though, and as you're recording it, you're recording with smiles on your faces. Which tells me you're able to do this and accomplish these things, and it's not exhausting. And that is refreshing to me, that we're able to put it in practice in a way that is meaningful to you. I mean, you have to enjoy what you do on a daily basis, and clearly you guys do. I can't thank you guys enough.
They're so excited to leave here this evening, not just to get a, watch us in the board meeting, but they've got so much work to do that they're excited.
It's like a lot of goosebumps.
Does that mean it's a big small waste of so many weeks?
Probably not a bad idea. Really, this is your...
If you can leave, it's okay.
Thank you.
Where are we going?
Sorry, Bill.
Okay, next is public comment, it's a city public comment. We'll move on to focus panel preliminary results.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time it's my pleasure to reintroduce the board to Mr. Bill Bonnick of Bonnick, Fannigan, Cassidy. The consulting firm that is walking side by side with the district during our future planning process. And Bill is going to present summary of findings for us on our seven focus panel groups that we just met with last week. That's right, Cass, Mr. Bonnick, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. We finished seven focus panels last year Wednesday, and about 6:30 at night, Matt said, we'd kind of like that to record October 3rd, next Wednesday, because we don't have another board meeting in front of campus. So here we are. I'm going to give you a brief summary, and then when I'm done for your homework, Mike and Matt are going to give you a 37-page report that contains the commentary from those who participated in the focus panels. So let's start with, what's a focus panel? A focus panel is basically a facilitated discussion with a group of people, in our case, seven groups of people, from which we try to solicit information. We start with an agenda or a list of questions, and then in effect, you flip the hook out, let it go, and see where it takes you, and then the check gives that not let it go too far, or can go, and we'll look back in, so you stay with the agenda. Focus panels tend to produce qualitative or subjective data, or information, which means it's not something you can typically add up. You know, I can't say 4A is 2B is a C equals 6, as opposed to a survey, which does tend to yield projected data, which you can add up. So that's what we're talking about, is subjective data, real note, fishing for all the information we can get relative to the plan. Matt presented to all seven focus panels a 40-minute presentation. We started out with a target of 30, but I know Matt, he has 40.
He had to say that.
But it was very important that we do that, because Matt provided background information, information about student successes in the district, and achievements, and partnerships, and talked about declining enrollment, which continues to plague the LaPierre Community School district, and some of the financial challenges that are caused by state funding of public education. So all that background information is very important. And then he concluded with a reorganization plan for the consideration of focus panel participants. And just to make sure everybody recalls some of the key elements, this was the handout we used, and let me tell you, five structural changes contained in the plan. This does not speak to all the innovation, the exciting educational opportunities, the partnerships and so forth. But structurally, the plan called for a lower and upper elementary campus, all schools coming together. There'd be an E5, early 5 through second grade campus, and kids in company, grade school, and kids in company at Golden Warner Campus, that's one. The later elementary grades, 3 and 5, would be at the separate campus. The year-round program at Terrell Elementary would continue as is, that's part of the proposal. And then there would be a traditional and year-round 6th, 8th middle school at the current LaPierre High School site. And finally, a comprehensive 9-12 high school at the current Center for Innovation site, that would include a performing arts center and dedicated community spaces. So that was the plan that was presented Thursday, and then he said, okay, let's, let's talk about this. So our purpose was to present this restructuring proposal in the context of demographic and financial change and reality. We focused on reducing the number of school facilities and related costs or questions related to that. We talked about continuing to implement educational innovations, which are, you know, above the norm in LaPierre right now, and look like they're going to be greatly enhanced if this process takes one. And finally, continuing to increase community engagement and partnerships with others in communities. So Cora and Mike talked about that, and so did we talk about it in our panels. The process, 40 minutes, then followed by a facilitated discussion. The seven focus panels that we convened, two on Monday night, elementary and secondary currents, and then Wednesday, the rest of the time. Now imagine Matt gave a 40-minute presentation to each of these. So I think he's probably still doing it to sleep with me, because some of the leaves in the row is quite something. If I had to give you a bottom line on the whole thing, here it is. Overall, there was unanimous support for the plan that was proposed. There was no wholesale objection to the plan, there was no wholesale objection to components of the plan. But there were a number of questions and a number of concerns that people had, and I'm going to share some of those with you tonight. We started by asking people, what do you like about the plan? And then we followed that with, so what questions and concerns do you have with it? So here are the likes. Generally speaking, people said, I really like that it reduces costs, which is something we have to do, because we're in a financial bind right now, that's destined to be nothing but worse as time goes on. I like that it allows for more efficiency in the deployment of staff. Notably, there will be less travel time for special needs students, they'll be able to purchase specially a teacher. They'll be able to spend more time doing what they do instead of driving from school to school. Provides for expanded educational and community engagement opportunities. So some of the professional development that you're seeing here, more opportunities for that kind of thing along the same place, and more opportunities for partnerships. And it addresses, as a panelist, it addresses head-on, that was kind of the key word, demographic and financial balance. I think there are a number of school districts in Michigan that are going to vote very similar to yours. And what many of them try to do is just make a cut here and a cut there, and closure here. This plan just takes the whole enchilada and deals with it all at once, so you don't have death by a thousand cuts. So people like the idea that it took on the whole, the whole game. game. And it rises, as said, the panelist, the school district for this generation and the next. You can correct my numbers, but generally, it wasn't long ago, you were an 8,000-student school district, right?
Yeah, we were almost not here.
Almost not here. Now you're in the neighborhood of five, slightly below, and the projection is you're going to buy them all at four, and we're now rolling on that just a couple of years. Then we should be there for a foreseeable future. So that's what the plan addresses. What do we do to get ready for a 4,000-student school district, so that we're not scrambling around doing silly things the day before we face that reality? The question and concerns expressed by the panelists probably can be grouped into six basic categories. One, the number one concern is, so what's going to be the effect on busing? If I shut the bus route, is it going to be longer, shorter, the same? How will you handle busing with a flex schedule for staff and your students? And this is an interesting way for the old panel to begin. Matt asked everybody, please take a look at what I'm presenting from your personal point of view, which is let people do naturally. They always look at something and say, let's see, what does this mean to me? But then dissect the on that and take a look at the bigger picture. What does it mean to the school district, the 4,000 kids who are going to be here, and, and the community? So look at it from your own perspective, and then take a look at it from a broader perspective. This was number one. Number two, there were questions about the educational and scheduling opportunities for all students. Some concerns from the panels about LaPierre doing a really good job with college-bound kids, and doing a really good job with kids who are not college-bound, but somehow missing the average. And maybe we need to spend more time addressing what's called the average student. Third category would be provisions for student safety and school security. You know, it's that little hierarchy of needs that people are most concerned about, is my child safe? And is the school secure? And I know you've been working hard at that and investing money in it, and that's part of the plan, too. Most of the questions related to student safety and school security were in relation to the new high school and the community's center that would be part of that school. How do we, if necessary, keep adults away from the community service, separate from the students, and vice versa? So how do we, how do we maintain security for students at that facility? Four, the proposal is to settle five facilities, and so the question is, what are we going to do with the money? And so what's ahead is some kind of market analysis to find out what value these facilities have, and then if we move forward with the plan, or even forward with the plan, to, in effect, promote the sale and see what the market bears. People did like the idea of, hey, put them out there and get what you can get for them, and let's get them from under them. We don't want to be in the business of maintaining empty facilities. So really, no objection to selling, but question about, what are we going to do with the money? What are we going to do with the money? Question about efficiency, about the deployment of staff, particularly staff that deal with students who have special needs. And in effect, what we're going to see here, as I understand it, Matt, is that these students are actually going to see more attention from those teachers, and they're going to be available in locations that are near the kids that are being served. So more on that later. And the use of a proposed comprehensive high school. Who's going to be in there? One example is metal delts. What are they going to do there? Another example is the library. What does that mean to the county library? And there are going to be profit, nonprofit organizations considered for residency in the facility. Who's paying for this? So a lot of explanation to do about, it's going to be a lease-type arrangement, and there are going to be certain rules that you have to follow, like you can't be putting a billboard in front of the high school, and let's get all to be developed. But those are the questions that came up. We have been working here for about a dozen years. My firm first made its appearance here in 2007, called to help the school district do a better job of communicating with people in regard to bond proposal. That bond proposal was successful. In fact, it was probably the only successful bondage in the previous 25, 30 years. So that, that was our beginning here. And here's how we did it. We did what we could, we engaged the community, we listened to them, we shaped the proposal with their input, and, and they supported what they saw as their plan. In 2012, reorganization hit again, declining enrollment, school finance being a problem. And we did focus panels here, hundreds, a hundred people, seven focus panels. And in that panel, we asked, so all things considered, what grade would you give the school district for the quality of education it provides? An A, B, C, D, or F, traditional scale. And the district in 2012 attained a score of 2.7 on the A, B, C scale. A is four, three is a B, two is a C, that's a C+. This year, we did the same thing. We said, all things considered, what grade would you give the quality of education? This time around, 3.1, B+. We're looking here at six years of significant improvement in community perceptions about the quality of education that's taking place in, in your school district. So, the panels, here's what they do. They provide a foundation for beginning a community dialogue. That dialogue is really already centered internally, and is going to continue when Matt meets on October 8th, is that Monday?
Yep.
With year-round staff, talking to them about what we discovered in the focus panels, and asking them to say more about the issues that they raised, the concerns that they have, and the questions they have going forward, because the plan was presented as a proposed plan. It represented the best thinking of a lot of people here, but it was not ever carved in stone. It did not come down from the mouth of non-captuits, and it's subject to change as it evolves. And that's what the focus panels will let us do. They will let us address community concerns and questions that were raised during the panels. They will let us use committee input to strengthen the proposal. One of the questions had to do with Terrell, and why couldn't that facility be part of the, the super elementary campuses? Well, there is no reason. So let's talk about it. And that's what Matt's going to start doing on Monday. And then during October and November, and before the Christmas season goes nuts on us, he'll be talking to members of the community, asking questions like this, helping to refine the plan, and address people's concerns, answer their questions, until we get to something where we can say, this is our plan. Okay? This is our plan. And so our intent is to initiate a, a community conversation that will shape the future of the school district. And quite honestly, the community, it serves for quite some time. That's a brief overview of what's contained in some 27 pages that we'll get shortly. Let me end with, that's all editorial commentary. As I said, we've been in and out of LaPierre for almost a dozen years, and have had a chance to see how you engage the community, and have learned with you that it makes all the difference, and whether a bondage gets passed or not, makes all the difference, and whether a plan that's implemented or not. And so a salute to you for what you're doing. And a salute to Matt, too, for keep banging it on. I think Matt and you are very good at going to the community, presenting ideas, and soliciting feedback, and really listening to what people have to say. That's been your history, and all indications are that it's going to be your future. So keep on, keep on. Matt took the Henry Ford quotation from the Shipwood presentation and preempted me with it, because that was going to be my ending remark, too, that in 2007, what we did was come together. That was the beginning. And then, over time, 2011, 12, we kind of kept on, keeping on. And now we've been working together, you're working together in 2011, 12, did generate success. It's resulted in higher grades for the school district, more educational opportunities for students. You know, prior to that, what did you have, Matt? 12 students taking advanced, not advanced, but dual enrollment classes. And this year, over 400. So we would call that, by almost any hundred, success. So that's what we did. You have the complete report in front of you. I encourage you to read it all, and see what your community is thinking. And then listen to Matt, as he moves forward, bringing us to the community, and working just straight from the plan. Got a question? I'd be happy to do that. Mike?
Question on process. So in the focus panels, did you, did you feel that the dialogue was open, people were comfortable? Did you see any apprehension? Was people not willing to speak?
No, I, I, quite the contrary. People were, yeah, no, people were more than willing to speak up and share opinions, some of which, to them, were a little bit painful. No objection to doing any of that. Some people stayed on after the session ended to elaborate on the points that they made during the panel discussion. So none of that. It was an open dialogue. There were a couple of people in the audience who were in panels, and they probably wouldn't, you know, have what they had.
And the format, as we indicated at the outset, was I give my presentation, then leave the room for a number of minutes, allowing, we don't want people to feel, you know, encumbered in any way by me. I would come back in about 20, 25 minutes after Doris, and he started to answer any questions that were raised that the consultants couldn't answer, and then leave again when they gave the school district its grade. You know, we want as honest feedback as possible during that process.
One of, one of the challenges of facilitating a focus panel is you were personally here at District, but there we do. And so when somebody has a specific question about a bus route, or a curriculum component, we have to lean on Matt to come back and deal with that kind of thing. And that's what we did. So, answering your question is, there were no problems on our part, and I didn't say anything on the part of anybody who was sort of the panels. They're all pretty much engaged and said whatever they wanted to say.
How did you select the panelists? Have you had the senior citizens or business owners?
Yeah, we identified the groups, elementary parents, secondary parents, so forth. And then we asked Matt and his team, and the principals, to identify people who would come and speak what's on their mind. So we wanted somebody who was a quiet, calm type person. We really wanted somebody who'd come and told us what they're thinking.
So I sent an email to each of the principals, from their part, and said, you know, do you have, you know, send me a list of engaged staff or parents that you think would not only be interested in this process, but perhaps were leaders already of their respective positions. So maybe it's a teacher leader, or a staff leader, a parent leader who has a, a nettle for people, right? And so they would, they would, the principals would then send those names to me to get a personal invitation from our office. And then I asked the whole team, people in the community that heard about it, ask be part of it. Anyone that asked to be part of it was basically placed on it.
Do you have any concerns, or sometimes that the people you've got in the focus group are the people that are very positive and rah rah, and, and that you miss sometimes people that are oppositional and...
Yeah, I would say, as a generalization, the people we have were more positive than negative, although the negatives were certainly represented. If you'll recall, when we were here last time for a bond, we started with focus panels, but then we moved to survey research. And, and we did representative sampling of the community, and that's how we got representative feedback from those who liked us and those who didn't, and all those in between. So that's probably something in your future to hone the plan.
Because this is just one step, you're right. And you're right, because you're going to get, you're going to get. But we also, I, we also encourage the critical thinking piece. So when we give the original introduction, you don't want a bunch of bobbleheads, right, to say, oh, this is great, and do whatever. You know, you can be a positive person, but also be a critical thinker, and say, yeah, I like the overall plan, but here are my major concerns. We've already begun to adapt the plan based on the original focus panel results, which Bill alluded to. We're going to have a meeting, or we invited all of our year-round staff, because there was concern about Terrell being maybe perceived as isolated, not part of a collaborative process. We don't want to be an element of ourselves. So we wanted to dig a little deeper. The next step would be, would we have focus groups, so a larger audience of people, and then have various, you know, we would facilitate very focused conversations with specific questions, a lot of which we got concerns from here, flush those out. And then last time, when we did the merger, I did, we did the focus panels, then we did surveys, then we did larger focus groups, then I did town hall forums, right? So open it up to everybody. And with each of those engagements, you get a larger swath of the community, and you really get to a point where, okay, at some point here, we have given every opportunity, we put all that information on its own special dropdown on the webpage, so every presentation, every report, every Facebook, you know, engagement, we put it all online. You'll recall there, that, that time, we wanted to keep the board meetings a sanctuary for, for school district business, and not have that be the only opportunity the committee would get to come and engage us. So we went to them, because this isn't the proper forum, because you can't have a dialogue where I grabbed a microphone, we also engaged, if you recall, a number of teachers and staff and community members to speak to the plan. So it wasn't just me, it wasn't just a consultant. We had teachers, we had coaches, we had band directors, we had community leaders, we had support staff people. I had, you know, transportation department on a panel addressing the various different things that were coming. So this is just kind of, and then dip your toe in the gold pool, stuff. Okay, are we totally crazy with this?
Yeah.
And then the next step is getting to a broader audience.
Yeah, this is a couple in the bond first circle. Now we'll go out, and then the plan will go the other way, right? We have the plan, and we'll come across and adjust, and be amended by what comes back from the people we talk to. Just one more thing on the people who were invited. They were also on a personal letter of invitation from them. We had a deadline, so if people couldn't make it, they let us know, and we replace them now with somebody else.
So what's going to happen between now and next month's board meeting?
So between now and next month's board meeting, we're, we'll talk about that. Like we'll have a dialogue as, as a board, and you know, some email communication will go out, we'll have some feedback. But we would like to go to a little bit larger, a larger group of people. So we want to prepare for the month of November, which would be probably two or three community engagements. We want to get probably at least 100 or so people in each of those, so if you're going to have a total...
Kind of like a town hall?
What's that? No, a town hall is more, you know, it's kind of a sit and get, or you can give a presentation, and maybe you have some random questions. This is a kind of a word group. So you're sitting at a table, so let's say, you're a board member at each table, and then we have a pair of coach tables, a teacher, a business owner, a elected official, parents, right? So each table has seven or eight people that represent a different group. We then kind of present the focus panel findings, present the plan a little bit, and say, at your table, we want you to have a specific conversation about, you know, concerns you have, likes and dislikes, right, of each component. And then we, then each table kind of shares out. So you got like 10 tables of 10 people, it's about 100. And someone says, so it's okay, Peggy, at your table, what are some of the things you guys heard? We document all those things, and collect all the feedback. Okay, we do that two or three different times, and it builds the plan even more. Simultaneously, we, we could choose as a board to have Bonnick do the phone survey, right, where they generate a list of questions and call the community to get actual feedback. It was hugely helpful. We did the high school merger. So one of the questions was, and I, I always refer to the report, they provided a three-ring binder full of... they provided a three-ring binder full of all the questions and answers, and they got over 1,000 respondents, which is, you know, pretty indicative, good swath of people. But they'd say something like, is closing one of the districts' two high schools a viable option for dealing with, you know, revenue shortfall? One out of two people surveyed said, yes, you should consider doing that. So, we knew before we even started our campaign, so to speak, that the concern of the community was basically open to that concept. That data was huge. Another piece of data, which of the district services do you find most valuable? Nine out of 10 people said, no matter what you do, don't change transportation at all. Well, nine out of 10, I'm not a calculus teacher, but that's a service you don't mess with, because you have too much to run up to a battle if you want to change. So, the survey takes you down certain pathways, prevents you from wasting time down others. And then, you would do this. So, with the survey results, and the focus panel, the focus groups, then go to the town hall, and basically say, here's our plan. What questions do you have for us?
So, the people that would be invited to the table conversation, would it be different than the focus panel?
Probably, yeah. It's going to be a broader group, right? So, you've got input from one group.
So, you want to get the same person?
Yeah, you want to get more people. You want to get more people. And what happens is the people from the focus panel, they see, you know, we'll send them all a copy of this report. They were part of the work, we're going to email it to them. And then, the final plan will probably look very different than the initial plan that they saw and opined on. And then, sometimes, they don't like that. Like, wait, I gave my input, I like that. But you have to allow for it to go through, you know, a bunch of change, because you have so many different voices.
They're being educated, thinking this is a process.
They knew that going, yeah, they knew that going. And it works. I mean, it works, because we did it in the bond. We did it with the merger. We're basically replicating that exact same process. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? It gets to a lot of people. We did not have, and those that were on the board at that time, we did not have a circus at our board meetings, right? Because we had so much engagement with the community. And we told people, if you want to tell us what you think, if you hate it, don't come to the board meeting, because we're not going to engage the public comment, that's that. But if you really want to give us your opinion, come to the town hall. We'll sit there for five hours and talk to you about it. And so, we were, during that whole process, our business, schools' business went on uninterrupted. Because, and then, we had seven or eight community engagements. So, sometimes, all the board members were there. Sometimes, two or three were there. Sometimes, it was just one. You can figure out your level of involvement, because from this point on, you'll be involved in everything. You come to everything. This was the first kind of, throw it out to them, get out of the room. And even through positive people, if it's a bad plan, they'll tell you, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they will. That's LePierre's history too.
Did you find that you got a lot of creative input? Like, because sometimes, you're on the top, I think, as you have, each person doesn't know much about it.
Yeah, one of the things we always insist on is not going to people with a blank sheet of paper, because you often get, well, you would know better than we would. So, we go with a straw man of people. And then, we say, go ahead and react. What do you like, what don't you like? What questions, what concerns? And yes, as part of the focus panels this time, the whole question of Trelle. And should that be a separate facility? Should it be included in the two super elementary campuses? And so, that's something that, you know, we maybe didn't spend as much time on as we should, and now, we're going to, we're going to. Another question was transportation. I'm not sure we had that fully fleshed out, because after all, it was intended plan. And so, now, we know, there's some transportation questions that need to be addressed, so that people understand what they're getting into from the perspective of their child. But also, the city and business leader and elected official group pointed out that, you know, students aside, will there be a lot of buses jamming up track in downtown LePierre? And what are we going to do about that? So, we need to know what's answered still.
I think that's something to keep in mind too. When you did the middle school plan, it was largely getting off of the people that went sixth graders with ninth graders. I think that's going to be a busing issue too. That, you know, I have a colleague that's moving out of the district, because her fifth grader is going to be with high schools on the bus. And she's like, uh-uh, that's not going to happen, I'm out. And they're moving. So, I mean, I think that's what they're concerned about, is the age on the bus they go on.
So, those are the types of things that need to be addressed from the forefront.
And this gives us the feedback you'll see as you go through every comment. We read every comment, it's dissected. It gives you an opportunity to be kind of proactive the next time we present. Here's what we heard from focus panels. Here were some primary concerns. Safety security is preeminent in people's minds. They're worried about transportation. Will bus rides be longer than they are now? How are you going to deal with the logistics of, you know, those things? And how we can kind of adapt our presentation to accommodate. And there will be more. Is there any, there'll be more, more objections, more people involved, and the better the time becomes.
You're building what we call football. And we built football on LePierre. And so, it ended this stuff going back to 2007. And now, we have a focus panel findings, and then, the community engagement stuff. And this football is going to be a very comprehensive thing before it's all done. And all of that will funnel into a decision that ultimately will be made by you. Should we take this plan in its final form, and put it on ballot in November 2019, and ask people to vote this way?
So, to answer your question, Jane, the month of October, we'll be kind of refining the presentation, and then scheduling the months of November, those kind of day community engagements. December to take all that data, probably do a survey, and November as well. Collect all that data. And the month of December, really build out a campaign. This is, as Bill said, our plan. We've had surveys, focus panel, focus groups, town halls, survey. We're ready to go. And come January, we go out there, and we're in bond campaign mode. So, January, February, March, we go into absentee ballots. You know, that's when you really, so the consultants come help us. Target vote November 1019. Let's go backwards from there, build a calendar for how we put together a successful campaign.
Yeah, there'll be a timeline for the whole thing before it's all done. That will probably follow the November work that you're doing.
Yes.
And it will build back from Election Day in November to the first campaign, which is six weeks before the November vote. That's an absentee ballot tab to yield. And what we're seeing is, it's not uncommon anymore for half the ballots cast in the school financial election to be cast by absentee voters. And so, our whole story has to yield by then. And we'll build back from that specific communication.
So, basically, this time next year, it's last week in September.
We're another year up.
Yeah.
I thought, how much are we reaching out to our young alumni? I mean, you see young people today, they're very motivated to be part of change. And we graduated so many great young people the last few years. And they still come back absentee vote, or come back home to vote?
Yeah, well, here's, let me give you a little election background if I can for a minute. Here's what we're seeing over the last, let's say, five years in Michigan. Parent turnout is dismal, terrible. And a school financial election tends to run 25, 30 percent. So, that makes it very difficult.
Our parents in the room are going to change that turnout.
Is that in the election year, like in a year?
That's taking all the election cycles, and putting them all together. It kind of holds true whether you go in May, August, November. And you used to go in February, that's a little more. And in March 2020, presidential primary, which will be soon. Anyway, current turnout is dismal. Young parent turnout is worse than that. You know, parents of students in grades K-1 to 3, now at their heads, say this is great, but they don't show up. Over the past five years, elections that have passed in Michigan are carried by people 15 and older. Actually, whether a bond, or sinking's unpasses, or fails, it's people 15 and older who decide. So, now, we're beginning to see some of the targets we need to look at here. And so, the audiences we need to address with varying types of messages. Absentee voter turnout is a function of age. Older people tend to cast absentee ballots more than younger people. Many districts will run a, let's get the 18-year-olds registered vote, many of whom are still in our schools. And we struggle to get double-digit turnout, like 10 or more showing up at polls. So, all those things need to be, you know, addressed.
Well, and based on that information, and that's not a surprise to the whole team. We heard that very directly from Bill and Cindy in their preliminary work of getting this focus panel, and developing the plan in advance. We have talked, at least in my time here, about a phrase that I think we coined as a group, is legitimate community involvement, right? We weren't going to do things that just kind of check the box, and say, well, we went to the community, we told the plan, and, you know, they all love it. So, we checked the box on community involvement. We have doubled down on really creating partnerships that have lasted, and are benefiting our kids every day with philanthropic organizations, the creation of the Leader Fund, and business involvement in schools. This comprehensive 912 building with a community-centered connection to it speaks not only to the practicality of that message, which we want to put all these services under one roof for our community, and our kids, and staff to access. But with that demographic information in mind, we've got to go to our community, and not just say, hey, we want to build the greatest high school in the history of high schools, and it's going to be great for our community, it's going to raise your property values, it's going to make LePierre a destination for community. That all sounds good on the brochure, but it doesn't get people out to vote. What is this going to do for me? How does this facility benefit me? Can I go there and access its resources? And we want the, we want the answer to be a resounding yes for that demographic of our community. It's a growing demographic, it's an active one. And in my estimation, as the leader of the organization, we would be stupid, that's the strongest word I can think of, not to put together a facility right smack dab in the middle of town, a prime piece of property, that's only used for 912 education. And we can, we can, we can put together a winning message. And we heard that, we heard our alumni group, our senior citizen group, our business group, in my estimation, salivated with that idea. Like, okay. And we didn't, we didn't promise anything. We mentioned the groups that we've had preliminary conversations with. I didn't say that, no matter what, the county library is on board. I said, I met with their board. I said, they had great initial feedback. They're having a board retreat in the coming weeks. I'm going to share this focus panel result with them. They're very open to the idea. I talked to McLaren, they want to partner with us. We talked to the sheriff's department, we talked to community health, we talked to the health department. We met with each of these groups. They said, in concept, we think this is a great idea. Now, how it all works out with leasing space, and who pays what, and how do we deal with the security of the community interaction with the kids, all those logistic things, we're going to have to iron out in the rest of these engagements. But conceptually, they think the idea is a sound one, right? And so, what have we done with this plan? We basically said, yes, we have to spend a little bit of money to build this facility. But operationally, we can reduce our operations cost from now until forever by a million to a million and a half dollars by not utilizing and trying to update aging facilities, by reducing the footprint of the district, consolidating our plan, we can be more efficient with the use of our taxpayer resources. And we got to spend a little money to get there. Yes, we do, that's a fact.
And it sounds like they want to know what you would do with the money.
Absolutely. And they want, that's right, that's right. That's a key thing, where does that money go?
So, I'm an apology, I'm very strategic, that's just my name, very strategic. Big picture. And I know a recent bond proposal in Duffer County, where they didn't have zoning to build the school they wanted to, they didn't have enough space. And now, they're waiting for that to happen. Meanwhile, costs are going up, right? They don't, they didn't prepare well. So, I guess that's just, you know what I mean, is I think, future that I hope we prepare well as far, because, I mean, we're still looking at a central piece of property that only has so much space, right?
Well, yes and no. Yeah, yes and no. And it's a great point, but we're not going to reduce the number of facilities to the point where they're jammed, and there's no room for growth. So, we've actually been sitting down, based on these results, and saying, okay, if people aren't necessarily in love with this community, what are a couple other ways we can present to the community? Say, hey, here's option A, B, and C. But each one of those has to fit, not just the current students, the projected number of students, but allow potential growth, right? Because, now, nothing, nothing demographically in the last 40 years, looking at Michigan's trend data and population in LePierre's, tells us that this population is going to turn, all of a sudden, turn a corner and go back.
Which I'll never know.
But you never know. So, we have a plan. We think, right now, it's a pretty sound one, that says, just in the same fashion that the resistance we face when it goes east and west. Oh, my gosh, kids will be hanging from the rafters, there'll be 45 kids in a room, teachers are going to be on carts, it's going to be mass chaos, again, more fear between east and west, right? We heard all that stuff.
They'll never get through the hallway.
We built, we actually hired a retired counselor, and built a mock master schedule with the existing students, rolled everybody up a grade, and said, okay, if I have every kid from east, and every kid from west, in that building, how will it work? And this woman spent months building an actual high school schedule that never happened, because it was a mock one, just so we could say, we can fit every teacher, we can fit every kid, and it worked. But that, I had Kevin Rose go out and literally measure, with a tape measure, every classroom, the width of every hallway, count the number of parking lot spaces, the square footage of the open areas, the age of the boilers, the age of the roof. We had that information, but I, he literally went out and measured stuff. So, we could go to the community as literally experts on all these facilities, and say, we know every square inch of this place, and what it can hold, and the capacity. We'll do that same work again, because people are going to ask that question. It happened yesterday, we presented this plan to the transportation department. One of the first questions was, okay, this is great. So, you sell every elementary building, and Pulte comes in and builds 1,000-unit home development. Now, you've got 400 elementary-age kids, what do you do? Great question. So, we don't sell everything and have a fire set, right? We've got a plan for that kind of stuff. The community asks those same questions that we're asking right now. Great point.
I just know the school's in a dire hurt because of this. It's terrible. My last question, because we have the experts here, is tax implications. Because we're looking at new tax structure. I mean, you know, that used to be a summer project, right? That's going to affect.
But what it's going to cost?
I mean, no, people, you used to be able to sell people to say, your taxes are going to go up, right? I mean, that's, you know, you're going to pay on the bottom, but it's deductible on your taxes. It's not deductible technically anymore.
We have finalized how much it's actually going to cost. We gave the groups three estimates.
Do you think that's going to affect, I guess, the voters?
No, I don't think it will, because the most realistic estimate is $100 million. And for the average worker, community school district taxpayer, that's 49 cents. So, how big of a, if you still have deductions, how big of a deduction would you get? We have not found that to be a motivator for people.
Oh, okay, that's what I get in the past.
Yeah, what their tax deduction is going to be. We provided those charts.
I was going to say, because that was always huge.
Yeah, like, figure all that out, yeah. Probably, in the community, there are people who, you know, the monthly sequential, went to the website, did that. Most people said, is this good for kids? And, well, my kids be safe and secure, but I'm on.
But to your point, Desa, I think it's important that, and I was, I asked, I sent him my presentation, and I said, we have too many slides, there's too much information. And they said, no. And they said, "No." Because you have, before you start, to your point, before you ask people to give you specific feedback, they better have specific data. So, we spent a lot, and I'm going to, did we send the board a copy of the presentation, of the focus panel presentation that I gave in PowerPoint?
I didn't.
Okay, we didn't do that. Do that. Want to do that tonight. You'll see in those slides, we spent a considerable amount of time proving our case over the last eight years. Folks, we merged two class-day high schools and didn't ask for a dime. We've got neighbors to ourselves who had to pass a $48 million bond to renovate one of their facilities and just to merge the high schools. We didn't do that, right? We wanted to enhance academic offerings. We did not increase or ask for a bond to do that and provide amazing opportunities for kids. We opened the Center for Innovation. We used an existing facility to do it and provided amazing opportunities for kids. We fundraised $3 million to build up our athletic facilities. Didn't take a dime out of our general fund. We asked the community to support us there. We wanted to prove our case. We made the tough decisions. Close the high school. Close Maple Grove. Close C. Sell existing property. Use the resources to enhance our current facilities. So, we have a great story to tell when people push back and say, "Well, you know, not to mention my favorite piece of assessment data that we have from Pulte in 1014, the M.D. produces, we are in the top 9% of school district entities in the entire state of Michigan for efficient use of operational and administrative dollars." That is if we marched on the street compared to the other 800 entities of education in this state. We're in the top 9% for efficient use of operational and administrative dollars. This is not a bloated district. This is not an inefficient district, right? This is a district that in the last however many decades has dealt with declining enrollment, yet we have put money in our fund equity the last three consecutive years. We have several contracts each for bargaining units, right? We're above the state threshold for what our fund equity needs to be. And we're making the tough decisions as we go. And closing those elementary schools was one of the hardest things I ever had to do professionally. Merging the high schools was a difficult thing for this community and more. But we decided to make those decisions. But now it's time to say to the community, "Okay, here's what we did. Here's our track record. Now, we need your help to get us over the hump." It's a winning message.
And we have a winning message, and we still have to go into this thing so cautiously. We cannot say, "We've got a winning message. We're going to win." So, if there is that large population out there that says, "Wait a minute. You said this is going to raise my property values? I don't want my property values to go up."
Right. And then one came with that.
And so, we have to be, you know, look at all of these things and how do you address those, right?
Where do we go from here in terms of my engagement is just start naming the community organizations, right? County Democrats, County Republicans, Tea Party, Kiwanis, Rotary, LaPierre Retirees, Kiwanis Club, Economic Club, Chamber, DDA, all those groups. We've already begun to start to reach out to you and say, "Hey, why don't you get on the calendar? If you want to come and just explain our plan to you, fire all the arrows at me and let's answer your questions." Right? We have to, we can't just sit back and say, "Well, everybody pretty much knows what's going on. People are living busy lives." You've got to go to them, and we're going to do that.
No, when we go on, we have the next round, and we're educating people maybe before the process begins. In addition to the winning message, the flip side is if we don't do this, you are, you know, referring to all the other districts that cut and cut. Well, now we don't have art. Now we don't have music. Now we don't have busing. We have to prioritize this. We have... So, you know, I know that's a big downer, but I mean, people need to know on the other side of the message is if we don't go forward, this is a reality that we're going to be facing five, 10 years as our budget shrinks. Chop, chop, chop. And you need to be aware that if you don't, aren't in, this is what you're choosing.
There are a number of... But that's the other part of it. You've got to be very careful with a message like that, too.
I know you do.
Because it's to be taken as, oh, right.
You know, I'm not threatening, so people need to be educated.
That's the old Frank Oil folder commercial, okay? Hanging out with people later. And that's a simple message.
Yep.
And you can do it that isn't in the threatening way. And everybody understands, I mean, that old commercial rang true for everybody for a long time. Everybody got it. I want to know, can you find that, I mean, G.I.S. data, at least they have the points of all, where all the kids live?
Scatter plot.
Yeah. Can we see that again?
Sure.
Because my concern is, I guess, living where I live. And I heard from several folks, I thought was interesting. One, they were very pleased they got an invitation. So, I mean, they thought that was very professional and well done. And so, that was a compliment to us. And then I had to laugh because I had a couple people say, "What input did you have into this process as board members?" And some were dumbfounded by that. And then others were kind of mad that we didn't because frankly, I felt good because they sort of trust what we've done as a board. So, that was good. I mean, we have some good things going for us here. But I'm concerned. I want to know how many kids are outliers.
Exactly.
Because living where I live, I mean, my course of school is Oxford.
Yep.
And so, I did have several people say to me, "How long's my ticket in the end of the bus?"
Yep.
So, I mean, that is a real concern. And my kid being the first one on and the last one off.
Yep.
Yeah. There's, there is no reason we cannot figure out how to change something. I don't have an answer right now, but I mean, maybe we needed a whole bunch of little muscles, right? That could kind of shift a lot.
The funny thing is, if you're running an elementary team and elementary school at closing time, maybe not morning, but... I mean, car, it's not like it used to be. My husband was just mentioning this, that, you know, you go to the high school and you're waiting in line for a long ways down the road. We don't have enough parking space. Is that, you see what I mean? I mean, transportation is different.
The point is, we can figure these things out. You know, you can have people in the room that know how to do this.
We don't want to let logistics sink away, right? So, the focus panel is 30,000 feet, folks. Is this pal? Okay. Then the focus group starts to drill down and say, "Okay, let's talk about start time of these buildings. Let's talk about cost price. Let's talk about, you know, probably getting kids from A, B, and C." And it's so funny listening to you guys today. We literally have these exact same comments at the cold table. It's amazing. The same, I mean, we get a bunch of little muscles. That came up today.
Well, maybe we need a little bit of partnering somehow with GLTA.
We've talked about that, too. Absolutely. So, what we did, so last time what we did, Jan, is we actually allowed Linda Thompson, our transportation director, to reach out to GLTA, reach out to other institutions that provide transportation. We partner. Second thing we did is we had Linda build mock attendance boundaries. We had the attendance boundaries kind of, okay, build some mock transportation together. Let's talk about the kid that lives in Attica, right? Have them go to Zimmer, right? And what does that look like? Here's the good news. Right now, you've got four buildings, Turl, Roland Warner, Zimmer and the high school. We don't have attendance boundaries. All four corners of the district. Go to those buildings.
You're already taking kids to Zimmer from Attica.
We know what we're doing.
Because...
Yep. Same one. But to your earlier point, we talked today about the complexity of a three-tiered system. The size of your fleet, average number of kids on the bus. But a mini game factor for LaPierre that a lot of districts in our area don't deal with that have a two-tiered system is we're 225 square miles, guys, okay? It's a monster. So, do I want fifth graders in the bus and 12th graders? There are districts, many north of 57, that have K-12 busing guys. I'm not advocating for it. But our reality becomes our paradigm, and we think that we couldn't possibly have kindergarten in a bus with 12th graders. Again, for the millions of viewers watching right now, I'm not advocating for that. But we have to recognize the fact that if you drop a bomb in the middle of the community and you can figure out just how to avoid it, you know, let's get as many wins as we can, right? So, if that's a major issue for people, listen, I'm not willing to die in the hill for, you know, busing issues. We'll figure that part out.
Well, and I think the more we can develop that, you know, because I mean, I think Oxford's a little less predatory than they used to be. But it didn't take long for folks, I mean, who are they going to pick off? They're going to, they'll, I'll get a targeted mailing. Kim will get one. We're going to get it out of our house, and they're going to say, "Why ride for 20 minutes when we're five minutes away?"
Well, unless you want to attend a district that has the rate of improvement that they deliver.
Right. I mean, but, right. We have to have that dialogue ready to go. I mean, we need our...
I think that needs to be part of our positive message, you know? What is this new configuration going to provide additionally that keeping things away? We have dozen. So, if you're going to say, "We're going to send your child to this campus setting," what does the campus setting afford your child? What additional services and electives and things that are exciting and opportunities, you know, to sell people on this?
Absolutely.
It would be a great read for...
I love hearing from the students, what they do. I mean...
I think in the end, the focus panel people will help us craft the messages that need to be crafted. And I think, you know, while we focused a lot tonight on just like seven buses and facilities, we haven't unleashed the story of educational innovation and opportunity in LaPierre. And that may won't be what drives the whole thing in the end. It's like, this is the place where people are going to want it, okay? And if I have to drive 10 or minutes to get there, doesn't matter. That's where I'm wanting it. So, I think that's...
But I also think, and having guys, I've faced down this barrel before. When I stood at a senior elementary school, right, with 150 very, very emotional parents, and they looked right at me and they said, "If you close this building, we are leaving the district."
Yeah, well, we sat right in this room. And there's probably a lot more people than that.
That's right. And we have to have the wherewithal, right, as a district to know that there will be that threat again. And, but have faith in the fact that we've been there, right, more than once. And if we truly believe this is what's best for our district, we have to stay convicted to it, right? And know that, you know, that sometimes those threats, some are idle, some are, some are true, right?
Yeah, that's why I want to see that.
Would you call that chart?
The scatter plot, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I just want to be able to tell people, you said, "Here's the 50 and overs who's going to drive this thing." Everybody understands flying to Denver to get to Cleveland. I mean, you shouldn't have to get there. I'm going to flush her getting to Emily City to get them there and stuff, you know? So, I mean, it's just a basic message.
I've got a feeling if we send anybody to Denver to get to Zimmer, we're going to lose them.
So, the other part of it is...
It's not your message.
I mean, I hope that's part of this process of the community collaboration you're talking about isn't just community mental health and the hospital. The hospital thing may be a little bit different. But I think of, as an older person, where do I want to move? I want to go to a college town. Why? Because it's vibrant, and I can go watch the jam game for three bucks. And I, I mean, there are all of these cultural activities that are created as well that are cheap. I mean, let's face it. We want cheap things that are really cool. And we could do that here if we had that, you know, community center auditorium-ish thing.
And not a facility, right? And not a facility under lock and key.
Right.
Accessible, right? And a community partnership piece of advice for us makes a lot of sense because I don't have to ban it 24/7, right? It's open and accessible on the weekends. It's the library would be. I want that access to the community, but I don't want necessarily to have a high school person or district staff member staffing, right? We get to sheer costs that way, right? What it looks like right now, I can't begin to tell you because we're in a, entering into partnerships means complexity. It means trying to figure out what's a good arrangement for both parties. The more people we bring onto the boat here, the more difficult it's going to get. I'm not afraid of that because of the focus panel feedback. I went in eyes wide open thinking, "If this thing had to crack, come out of it, we have to retool and start the whole process over again."
Have we researched, like, other communities where they have a really kind of multifunctional high school that's doing this and how they're handling it?
Yep. And that's our next phase. So, our next phase is, one of the questions we heard a lot was, from our staff especially, "What other configurations are similar to this? Who else is doing it?" Jared and I did a little digging today in the 2004 master planning document, three-inch three-ring binder that was put together for LaPierre. Our old elementary structure. Jared and I were laughing out loud today. We don't, there was 12, 15 buildings that year, 17 buildings. I don't think two had the same grade configuration.
No, they didn't.
E5 to 6, E5 to 2, this is a 1, 2 building, this is a 7th grade building, this is a 3, 5 building, this is a 4, 6.
3 building.
Okay, I think it was, it was, it's our own district. We started doing some research. There's any number of grade level configurations and then some. It just really depends on what you have available as a resource. What characteristics, what variables in your district make the most sense? And yeah, I can go find three or four districts that have an early elementary campus, upper elementary campus and talk about that. We can show that, no doubt. The community centerpiece is more common out of Michigan.
I was just going to say, you guys think you go to Florida.
Then, we also...
I mean, you really do. I think that's how they integrate it all.
Yep.
And I like Mike's point, so it's not just mental health or stuff like that. It's also being innovative and thinking, "Hells, can we use the space to bring the community in? Even raise revenues. I mean, if you have facilities for art classes and the type of performances."
It's funny that you say cultural because that seems to be a common name. They'll say, "Whatever cultural center." You know what I mean? It's like, "Community name, LaPierre Cultural Center." And then it's not associated so much.
Right.
It's definitely what that center...
I just have a question out of the focus panels. Did they mention things to do to the other buildings that we want to reconfigure, like the high school? Like, was there any feedback on that?
No suggestions in that regard.
Well, I'm sorry. What was the question?
Were there suggestions, things that should be done to the other buildings? And the answer was not, no.
No, more generic questions about, hey, if you have a bond, will there be opportunities to renovate the facilities, which we would probably have? I mean, if we convert Roland Warner to an early childhood center, I got to lower the year-holes as long as I'm with this. Really just basic stuff, right? Not a whole school building. It's just a fact, okay?
I mean, safety and security.
Safety and security upgrades, yeah.
You don't try five elementary bids when you do this.
Safety and security upgrades at the buildings because that was... That is the big push. That kind of talk was, you know, we've got 13 buildings now. To make them as safe and secure as we'd like to is a cost prohibitive endeavor. If we reduce it down to five or six facilities, guess what? I'll tell you where the sale of those buildings will go. If we sell a building, it's going to go to increase safety and security of the remaining facilities. That'd be my first answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck going forward. You'll do well.
You'll be here.
Yeah.
What do you mean, "Good luck"? You're going to be here. How about see you in November? Will that be a better exit?
Well, you can't lose sight of what you have going for you. It's the quality of your thinking and the process, Jan. So, just stay the course, and you'll be just fine.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He takes us to Word's side. We have that on finance and operations.
Finance class.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we have that very carefully on.
We have had, or this is for snow plowing. We're finishing lawns. We're doing the snow now. And B&amp;B had notified us in August that they were not willing to maintain the price that they were charging for the areas of the district that they were plowing. So, we, and they had been agreeable to that for two years, but they had needed to have change in their prices. So, we did put what they had done out to bid, and we had themselves Emerald Lawn and Landscaping respond to that bid. And that is for doing LaPierre High School. And we have very specific requirements with, because the high school has to be ready at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. The Zimmer campus also has to be ready as well as, then we have mentioned, Mayfield is our elementary. So, we had bids for that Group A, and the lowest bid came in as Emerald Lawn and Landscaping out of Burton. This is a new contract with this group. They do do a number of plowings within LaPierre County. They actually have located within LaPierre County the flowers. And so, they came in with a bid for $1,915.75 for a two-inch to six-inch, and then $2,910 for six inches or more. They also will be doing hand shoveling of the walks to avoid having trauma to the cement or the lawn when you have a motorized vehicle going through those areas. So, we are recommending that group be given to Emerald Lawn and Landscaping. And then Bill Jostock is maintaining his price for this year. So, he will be continuing to do the bus garage, Kids &amp; Company, CFI, Maple Grove, Turl, and Roland Warner. And then Group C will stay with Truput. They are keeping their price the same for this year. And they will do Crampton, Administration, and Murphy. So, our recommendation, which we have a consentation for that, will be to approve the three groupings for plowing for this coming year. And, Jan, any questions?
Just for the record, if others attending need to approve Mr. Weisner. We want to thank him for the time he poured into this.
He spent a lot of time because we wanted to make sure that this new service that we're going to use really could meet our requirement, especially with that case for plow. And obviously, the bus garage, we know that Bill Jostock has been doing it. So, he, the high school is the next biggest, and we look at property that's a live area to be plowing and have ready in the appropriate time.
I think you left the fact that they shovel the sidewalks, or they shovel the sidewalk versus putting snowboard around the sidewalks.
I don't work like that.
You did like that.
Very protective.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, they had them when they were...
Turl.
Before, yeah.
So, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Weisner. Before we move on to the next presentation, I think it takes a five-minute recess.
Okay.
It's all right. Somebody asked me.
Yeah, I was reading. I heard. Yeah, I want to warn you right now.
And she'll leave.
How are you? What's that? Long water. I had a couple people emailing me and said they'd be there something good and stuff. I'll find it. I'll find out. It was just arbitrary. That's right. Okay. Can you go to what? You can't see which one is here.
No.
From the meeting in H1, you know, I'm a detective just staff.
And I get it. Totally understand.
What I'm gonna do is I don't present the case personally. And just we'll have a conversation. Does that what's the only thing we're talking about? I know. What's the first one?
It's the first one.
First one. So can I? Not a bid, it's all special meetings by what we're not using. So why don't you deal with the group? It's based on the price. Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot more variables than you can.
It adds one variable.
Yeah, there's a lot more on the wood. Let's send me some dates and we'll get together. Thank you. No, 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 no. Yes.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
I was gonna say. Because it was raining. It's just the last time, right? Oh, was it? Okay.
So you don't want to do that, right? I'm gonna read this 317 document. What's your presentation?
What was that? What's that slide? What do you think for you? Uh, they're good. Okay. Cheese platter? Done.
Do you have five degrees?
Cheese platter didn't spark me a lot.
Sure.
I said cheese platter, cheese platter. Oh, there you go. All right. I made a mind for two slides here. I don't think you want me to.
I'm under it.
No. I'm not experienced on the cheese.
Security system update presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The board requested last month to have an update as it relates to some of the new security provisions the district put in place over the summer months. I have commissioned everyone's favorite assistant superintendent to provide that update. Mark Rader, take it away.
All right. We'll try to keep it brief. There'll probably be more questions than there is presentations. So really, security is what we've done since the end of the last school year. The summer was fast in tears. The board knows we started rearranging, bringing a bid for one element, some of its operational. So lots of stuff went into it, but just as a refresher, because we live this every day, you hear it when we give this presentation. So security isn't this one dimensional element. We have lots of them. So from a quiz standpoint, what security have we had in this district for at least two decades?
Cameras.
No.
Cyber, cybersecurity, right? Don't think of it. We've had cybersecurity dealing with computers since Y2K, 1999, right? You don't think of it, but that's one of them. And now it's becoming even more because all of our systems are electronic and technically backed. And now that cybersecurity is probably more important than it was for the last 20 years. And so this is ever evolving, ever changing, physical training, all these different elements. Can we answer the call for all those money and time? Answers no. So we have to evaluate and come up with what's, what's the best return for the dollar. Hence, the door intercom system that we put in this summer. So that's just one element. There's lots more to come. There's lots more to develop. Unfortunately, from the next catastrophic event, more than likely, that's how society deals with it. And we learned that only medically with better materials, supplies and ways to react, but also how to change, how to look, how to be more observant. So we've had a lot of them. I mean, one of the other ones that we had, the old mission, along with we had NSR old presence in the building. It's a mild five years. I think it was five years before. So it's been at least 10 years we've had at least in some of our buildings. So we've had a number of elements over time. This is just trying to raise this to the next level. So for this year, this school year, 1890, so we have three officers. So we moved from two, as you know, to three. Having better coverage, having better response time. We have now four professional service employees, PSC, as we refer to them. So the one at the high school, that was Pete, who previous school year was split between the high school and Zimmer. We now have one at each location. Part of that was because we needed somebody to deal with the door intercom and the amount of logistics we're dealing with. Part of it is just trying to help our buildings manage the students and bodies. The right-hand side, the pre-planned live, that tool that is still evolving, the first side of it, 3D imaging our buildings. So first responders can have, and Matt doesn't have it, but iPad Pros where stuff will come up immediately. First responders will have it, see visuals of our building. We also will have notification systems and other elements. The second thing we've been working with for the last 30 days is adding, where are our gas shutouts? Where are water shutouts? Where is electrical? Because it's not just what's the physical location of the room, if there's an intruder or cash machine that hits. Sometimes it's a gastic. Sometimes it's a chemical. I mean, we're moving into a world of what we can predict. So this is helping us build a better response for us as an entity, not only as administrators, but also for our teachers, parents, et cetera. And then finally, we're really gonna focus on the eight home door intercom system. We installed that 10 buildings, really 10 locations because the Royal Warner consists of two, Kids and Company and the middle school. So the door intercom system, the training is happening. So this is the book that we use. We started with the administrator training on Friday, August 17th because Royal Warner had theirs installed, showed them how it worked. A wizard presses the intercom button, the main desk, the secretary can correspond, the protocol to go through. The bulk of the training was in the second, the secretaries, custodians on opening day. Spent several times with custodians. So they're familiar and they understand logistically what's going on. Not that they're responding to staff coming into the buildings. The real focus was on the secretaries. We had their, both AJ and Jimmy were present because there were a lot of good questions. We went through a number of elements. If you look in that right-hand or the left-hand side of the booklet, you see there's this laminated page that tells them what to do because we wanted to make this easy as well as for sub secretaries. So it's fine if Jan's the regular secretary and she's there every day, but four, five, six times a year, there's going to be a sub there. They also have to be familiar because we don't want to change the protocol just because there's a new body sitting at that desk. And it really goes through, where the bulk of the training was focused that day on questions was in the red on those sheets. I didn't put it up here because it'd be too hard to read, which is really, okay, you have multiple people at the door. They come in. Well, we want this to be a negative experience. So the training of what is said and both Jimmy and AJ's support is, no, do not confront them. Try to have the most positive interaction. Please, we're trying to have only one person in the building at a time. Most parents have been open, receiving this pretty well. And so it's a learning. It's really focusing on the person who is combative or looking for evidence. And what is that? We're not foolproof. We're not a security officer, but I can tell if someone's nervous. I can tell if they have a big heavy coat or they look bulky and that's not normal. Our camera, you'll see later a slide, we can see everyone from their feet to the top of their head. And there was a reason we located, which you'll see the blue feet at 57 inches from the wall because I wanted to be able to see, did you put down bags? Do you have other things with you besides just seeing from waist down? And a lot of that was some of the work we did ahead of time saying, a lot of them are just the torso. Well, that doesn't do us a lot of good of identifying someone that's that close to, to the wall. So the training ended, we went through, very good feedback that day and since then. So we went live on the first day of traditional school. Went out not only after I trained, but I personally trained the week of the 22nd. Every building with every secretary, we walked them through physically the system, let them go outside and push it, let them sit inside, work through it. And I can say, the response has been overwhelming. I haven't received one negative response from one secretary as to the issue of putting the sign. Have we heard, yes, there's more volume, yes, there's challenges, yep, we're gonna get to that. But we haven't heard, this is gonna ruin our lives, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna stop. Which I give credit to the staff because this is a big cultural change, but they adopted it very well. The challenges, this is probably where we're focusing the most of our effort because it's a big change. So the buzzer replaces the old walkie. So secretaries, we're used to walking in, Bob does, I have my head down, I'm doing workouts. I stand up, I got five people in front of my counter. High schools, prime exam, if ever been entered between Lori and Sharon, it's constant chaos in that office, right? So this helps them control who can come in and what, and who's entering, unauthorized visitors. Tell you one thing we've learned, and Doug and Chad know about this, guess what we get from that person at the high school? His parents learn to deliver Jimmy John's to their son or daughter or what have you. And so now we're getting buzzed by the fast food delivery for lunchtime. Well, at some point, at some point, we're gathering data, kind of like we talked earlier on stuff, and at the end of the year, we'll process. What do we need to change? Does that have to change for next year? We only have so much time and manpower to manage it, so we're just kind of using this as a learning year to go through. But we're getting great feedback from everyone. The visitors, multiple times, most what I've witnessed, wait their turn. Some will come in. It's really addressing them as a state that we really want you to wait to be addressed and ask which first appointed business is. Because not everyone has a right just to come into the building. So we really want to make sure. That's one of those protocols that Jimmy and AJ pointed out. Hey, if they're fumbling, and they can't say, I have a son or daughter, I'm here to meet the principal counselor, you may want to ask some more questions. So you'll see on the sheet, it's not foolproof because it's just a guide. It's, it's to help you and then every situation is going to be different. The repetitive instructions that we have not, I have not heard of any negative, what that really refers to is the secretary's not comfortable with the first response they bring in, either the resource officer and/or the PSC or the principal. He or she would then ask the same questions again, try to make determination before you press the unlock key and let the person in the building. So far, we've not experienced that of those. And the last one is probably the biggest one over time. That folks will just be bothered by the buzzer and they just press the green unlock button and the door unlocks and the visit comes in. It's back to the old way of, well, I'll read them when you get in the building. Well, it's a little neat if it's a confrontational person. So that, how we're dealing with this, Mark Meiser on his monthly building reviews for doors and things has now added the door security to ask the secretaries, how's it working? What functions working? How was your call line? So we're gathering the data as we're going. He just completed his first round this last month in September. And to get information, actually, the name is out of Royal Warner. Royal Warner's broke. The actual device broke and we gotta have it repaired. So do we know things like that are gonna happen? Yes. Probably the biggest thing we've learned is this last section is signage. So I'm gonna jump ahead so you can see. So here is Zimmer. So you can see, this is a pretty typical setup of every building, doors. It's located on the left-hand side of the call box because in this case where you see the yellow sign on the door, the left-hand side door, that is the door that has the striker that automatically opens. So the call boxes are located in conjunction with that door so that the person, once they stand on the blue feet buzz, it's a five-second delay, but they have time to grab the door and enter the door. We have had instances in some buildings where the five seconds is not long enough. So we're still adjusting. This sign is the biggest learning lesson, which is, all visitors, please push button for entry. Now, what you don't see here, that used to be just to the left, so you see the little raceway on the bottom. There used to also be a doorbell. Because prior to the call box system, most of our buildings had a doorbell. So if the doors are locked, someone could ring the doorbell, ring in the office. They were pushing the doorbell. We turned the doorbells off. They stood there, pushed the doorbell and just stood there and never pushed the call box. So we've removed all the doorbells in all the buildings. And now we've learned that our signage was not appropriate because it really should say, please push the call button. So they can see, and it's kind of harder, but you can see it says call on the bottom of the box. That's the button there just above it, that black area that you would push in and it buzzes the workstation so that the secretary sees the video and the audio turns on, they have a conversation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I've seen that a couple times with, you know, somebody said to me as I walked up, I'm glad you're here because I wouldn't have a clue what to do. You know, that was a big one. The second one was, I went in and the next person, they were trying to press where it said call, not necessarily the button.
I've heard that one.
And I had to go back and show them because the secretary's like, what happened to the person that's behind you? I'm like, well, they're still sticking in there.
The yellow sign on the door, but that is, and we will, and we've mentioned it before, we're gonna get permanent signage made so that that door that has the striker release will say, please enter through this door. Because if you go to the high school, if I have the high school, you got eight doors there. And they literally even know it's the same setup. It's right, it's the door right next to the call box on the left-hand side of the panel of eight doors. We got people going to the other doors trying to pull them open to get in.
You seriously do have people trying to do this?
I did.
Yes.
I go to the right door.
I would do that. I would, I would go to, the blue feet do help because I think that shows you where you're going.
Can we, uh, play a word? Can we revoke Peggy's badge checks?
I would do that.
These two locations are all sheltered from the weather.
They are all except two and we're in the process of changing. So Murphy and Roland Warner, I'll use this, is the canopy. Murphy's is about right here. You're just on the edge of where the drip would be.
There would drip on you.
Yes, and Roland Warner, it's actually that semi radius. It's right on the edge of that. So we are getting angled brackets that will turn that call box on a slight angle so that they will be under the canopy. So once we have those and they're having So once we have those and they're having to make those, all the buildings, you will be under canopy. Except, there's no way we can prevent this, is that kids and company, there is no canopy over the doorway. And to construct something would be expensive, but Matt and I have talked of maybe a freestanding where you have four posts and you have kind of the arch, some kind of cover that this coming summer, we'll try to install because obviously we've got to put posts in and it's not a quick install. But we have thought about that.
We want it to be safe and we want it to be dry.
Yes. And we didn't think of that, Mike, until we started watching parents come in with little ones and multiple little ones, you know, walking slow and then taking the follow-up. So we will do something there, we're going to figure out what's the best solution as we move forward. Because remember, all the secret regulations, if we attach to the building, we got to get standard proof and all that. So we'll figure out how to address that and give them some cover so once they get from the parking lot, they're going to get some cover and so they can get in. So the signage, there's really three phases to the signage. The yellow signage will tell you which door to open. I use the door to the right, will be the second layer of signage, which we will have signage made that will be on exterior doors that will state, all visitors must use the entry system to enter the building. On the inside, think of this, on the inside of that door will be a corresponding message on the inside that will be the students and staff, please do not prop doors open or open for visitors. So that we remind all of the folks inside, they'll be opening, prop the doors open. And on the outside, think of there at Zimmer, there's lots of doors, there's three on the west, there's three sets on the south, there's the big ones on the north, but there's only one way to enter and that's through the south main entrance doorway. So the point, a stranger would maybe leave the building back to that main entrance. So we're going to work, I gave the signage made up, but I'll attach the glass to those doors.
So I can't remember, I mean, I guess I can see this, but I'm just wondering if, it seemed like there was quite a few comments about people not liking, like me going in and not saying to that girl that was, you know, coming in behind me, I didn't know, you know, just say, oh, just come in, you know, just hold the door open for them. You know, like each person should enter individually?
They should.
Because I'm not sure that, does the public realize that?
That is an education that we've taught to the secretaries and training that they won't have to. Most of the visitors are obviously the parents of students, doctor's appointments, bringing books or whatever. So it may be only once a year you come and then maybe one and done and you learn and then you wait till next year. A lot of them are repeat visitors and so once we get through it, they'll know. And most of them I've seen, probably students are better at the high schools, they wait their turn.
So are you updating the sign language that says safety notice?
We are.
Where do you put each visitor?
We're in the process of tomorrow of sharing it with the building principals and the secretaries to give another, we reviewed it today in bulk and then give another set of eyes and feedback before we go with the final version of what the final wording will be.
Okay, they addressed what Lisa's saying on each visitor. I don't know, I'm just interested.
You may talk about this on the, my experience at the high school, I mean, they're very good, everybody wakes up early, everybody's going in one at a time, it's a little simple. The kids still hold doors open. They do, kids, I mean, what's every person, especially the kids, every natural tendency is to hold. So they'll hold the door open.
Long time ago, watching replay.
Exactly. That's true.
And I agree with Mike, and that will be something, we were not thinking that, once we switch this over, that we're going to have 100%. It's a change of culture. It's the same thing of, it's not just the doors, it's don't be afraid to ask if you see a stranger, you know, what's your business or what are you in the building for? It's the same thing if some of us go in the building and our maintenance guys, don't just walk in, even though you've got your ID badge and you can get in, go to the office, tell the office you're there to do whatever so that if someone reports, they kind of know why you're in the building. Those days where we just came to the back door, we went and dealt with what teachers were looking, I don't know who you are or whatever. So it's kind of just change of culture and with the students, it's going to take time.
I think of it like in accounting perspective, that it'll get the collusion. So I think of that sometimes, like what if somebody was already there and opened the door on the opposite side of the building for somebody? Do we have things in place to help with that? Because you can't stop collusion sometimes, I mean, it's just people work for you.
I don't have them memorized, but I believe at the high school, there's roughly 80 doors. Literally, you can get in the building. We can't physically man any doors, we couldn't, those security cameras tested in to monitor 80 doors. So you're right, it's a matter of changing the culture, but I can tell you, in the first week, I scared the jeebies out of Mike and two other coaches because they were at the high school, at CFI, I said, from the high school, they had the door open on the back side to the locker room. They were in the little coach's room in the locker room and Mark and I literally walked in and they were telling money from a fundraiser. And they did not care if we walked in, but we didn't claim noise, we walked in. And I stood over Mike and I said, good day. He just jumped out to see. And it was a perfect example of having the discussion of, the doors are open, we just started the system and they did not think differently. And then, I don't know the coach's name, I should, but it was for the ninth graders and said, you know what, I usually just open that door and let the kids come in, but I realized, you've got students sitting here until 5 o'clock, I'll keep it closed while I'm here and then let them all in one stop, one time. So it's going to be incidents after incidents like that that we'll just work to train and get folks to understand it's a different culture. Everyone's been pretty good, everything I could say. And at the buildings with the PSC officers, with the resource officers, with the principals and the deans, they're all watching and doing good. Another item we learned from this early on before we implemented, my doors get propped open in elementary school. Well, subs come for parapros, parapros go off for recess, no one gives them an ID, so when they go out the door, they can't get back in. So they pop the door open. Well, that's an easy pick. We can issue multiple badges that the office can handle for subs and get them back again and they either buy a driver's license. So this has been good because it's making us think about things we didn't think about before in the buildings. It's been a good partnership. And last but not least, and I oversold this and now we're probably still telling the others off, but the first bullet point. So state originally had a bunch of different versions of grant money available, it's settled with the FISA State Act of 25 million, 10 million in small increments, 15 million in large increments, large being greater than a million dollars because you, the district, have to match 335,000. Small increments are 25,000 per building or 250,000 for a district. And you have to submit a plan. But the biggest hurdle was, you had to have emergency operation plan, LP, for both the county, emergency manager needed to sign off on, and your police department. Well, you literally had less than 10 days to do that. We pulled it off because they, state won't even consider your grant unless you have that in place. Lots of formal paperwork, it's about 80 pages long. It's the beginning, it's not the end, there's still a lot of work to do down the road, but it's one of those things where, don't put it on the shelf and forget about it, it's supposed to be living documented. But we already do a great job of working with our first responders, so that was one of the reasons they required this. We already do that. It's really communicating and training. And that's where we need to improve and do more, which we will. So we've got that, that grant, what we're hoping to do with is again, priority is to put film on the windows. The priority for approving those grants was you doing security to your exterior. What we already did are 8,000 dollars on the door income, so we couldn't submit that because your expense has to be after November 1 of 2018, we already incurred. So we're looking to be able to put the film on the windows as much of our exterior space as we can, which would not allow a bad person to enter through that glass. So yes, the bolt will go through the glass, the glass will not come out. You can take a sludge hammer, you can neither, all you want, you're not going to knock the pane of glass out because the film actually attaches to the window frame all the way around. So it's different from the safety glass, it's got a piece of plastic between your windshield, windshield cracks, but it won't fall in. If you kick the windshield in eventually, you won't be able to knock the windows in. It's not foolproof because obviously we got miles of glass, but it tends to be, depending on entry points, that's where we're focused on, that's what we submitted for that. The ISD submitted similar grant for the trauma kits, stuff that you talked about Peggy with us and the sheriff and we had all the police here almost two years ago talking about the carbon that you put in the wounds and all the things to deal with traumatic events where most of the people who die don't die from the actual incurred injury, they die from the time that they get medical help. So the ISD is doing, submitting that for all the districts and the county. And then we'll continue to work, we've talked about, Mike's talked about, from our sixth man, at some point doing training. For those that are familiar, last year, they did training in Northridge and they actually did, the peer emergency manager did a live training in Northridge Schools. Actually, she told me about it, it failed because most of the teachers knew and there were certain students who were graduates who were planned to do certain things. Well, when the alarm went off, teachers that knew, they didn't come out of their classrooms. So she literally had to go in and say, no, you need to react like this to be normal. And as soon as they came out, they were all shot dead. But they wanted to go through this example because that's the training, it's not just read a book or watch a video. We need to show people, here's what you hear, here's what you see, and you may see trauma and death, but you have to continue to move into a direction to the safety of the rest of the staff. So down the road, I'm sure we'll be looking at stuff like that and looking at all these technologies and that's kind of the playoff of the pre-plan line. There's more and more stuff coming from more and more companies, technology wise, drones, all this wild stuff, and then another.
So pre-plan line, how much do we pay for that? Was there cost?
Haven't, not yet. We're still.
Is it going to go to?
Well, that's part of, part of what the ISD is trying to figure out, I don't know, that's one of the superintenses as to what portion or how much of it, because there's multiple layers. When we first started the discussion, it was a whole different dialogue than where we're at today. It's developing a much more robust program than when we originally started, so.
But we must be paying them for the work they're doing.
At this point, no, they videotape all of our buildings for no cost to create the 3D image.
And did we look at other companies then or?
We hadn't. This is a, this is a bird, this is just the beginning of the world. Are there others out there starting? Probably, but this isn't.
This was the group that wanted to work with us, right?
Yes.
We already have their website, so that's kind of interesting that.
Because we are working, we work with them.
And they don't have very many.
But they needed to develop, so think of this, they had an idea, they had a product, but they needed to videotape classrooms in order to start to develop the product beyond. Now they could, um, you made a mock classroom in a basement or whatever, but they wanted the real stuff so that they could show you, here's what it'll do, here's how the eye in the command center can see and direct first responders while on an actual call. And then also for, then as we started to talk to them, where's the gas shut off? Where's the weather? Because in many of those instances, that's what they'll do. If it's a hostage situation, you know, we're not going to sit there for two weeks, we're going to first turn off the air conditioning, we're going to turn off the lights, we may do limited water and food, but there's techniques that those first responders know how to put the pressure on to get that bad person to come out or compromise their situation to either sharpshooting them. So.
Well, in the end, we brought in, we brought in the city fire, city police and the sheriff's department and said, what do you guys think about this as a biolog product? And they said, we've never seen anything like this, this is remarkable.
Keep developing it.
Keep developing it for the cost, do it. They, they are already, they've already got our peer dispatch system, so it's connected to the notification perspective, so if an incident happens, every single first responder gets notification, every administrator gets it. It's, it's pretty remarkable.
I'm still not convinced they're the only company out there, I think there's probably others.
There is, but not with the value of this technology, no one does.
So if we do an expense, is there going to be a bid process because of the dog?
We spend, we will spend an annual operations fee that's pretty, pretty inexpensive, we won't get into the bid though.
And it's a service.
It's a service, yeah.
We don't own, we don't own a tangible product. There's no asset, there's no, there's no.
Well, how would that be different from stone piling? It's a sort of, we pay more. So we don't have an asset, so why wouldn't you go to, why wouldn't you go, if we suddenly have to pay, why wouldn't we go through the bid process? Is it different than stone piling as a service we pay more?
Because I could go up for bid if it doesn't exist or if it doesn't, if someone only has one element.
Yeah.
Then I have to make a determination on that element versus someone coming and saying, we're trying to develop a first responder system that has all these things. Could you do that? Yes, you could. But you're going to limit to what they respond to and if I don't know what I'm asking that I want.
How do I write?
How do I write my proposal to get, to get, well, I don't disagree, but I wouldn't know how to approach it from that aspect.
Are there companies that have elements of what pre-plan life offers? Yes. The 12 package, no. It doesn't exist.
Well, I mean, and I think that's a discussion, Jan, we have three years from now because you're at the leading edge of this stuff. So in this group, if I remember right, was more than willing to work with our district. Probably not making the same deal with everybody else, I mean, they need to eat too. But my understanding is they've done most if not all of it.
Well, I guess this is the first I've ever heard of and what they do, so I was just comparing that to that. You got any other questions?
Other questions. So there'll be a lot more, this will be normal vocabulary from now to the future of security and the elements of security and how we can, as we were talking earlier with Bonneville of less buildings and how you can clean segments and what that means compared to having a level of 12% in buildings. Obviously, a small footprint, we could do a lot more.
Thank you, it sounds like the introduction of this intercom system went very well, being brand new to all the schools, secretaries, and it seems like it's been a pretty seamless thing because you're right, it's a big culture change for them and the parents and anyone that goes in the district. But we can keep our kids safe with one small action at a time.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Mark. Takes us to act later, we should have a consent approval, will they approve all the management's requirements? And we have the overnight request before we move.
I have a couple of questions about both of them, I don't know how you want to answer that.
I'll move it first. The approval of the minutes, the way consent items are approved.
Well, just reading the minute, meeting minutes, and in the presenting school, Mr. Downing has his title, I guess I just feel we should give credit where credit's due in the presentation discussion section, like list Michelle Brad, there's a title behind her, her title behind her name, the principal of the high school, so that if you were our, like you just list those people and I just think, if you, they work hard to be where they're at, like you have Mr. Downing, he's the principal at Turrell. And just if someone were to boil these, they would know who those people are, just a suggestion going forward to add. In presentation discussion, when Michelle and.
When it says Turrell principal.
Right, but Michelle Brad.
And he has his title there, you know who he is. And then Downing. I mean, I just, they have their titles, they worked hard and it's just a suggestion I have for meeting and it's going forward. So that was all I wanted to recognize regarding these items. And then the band trip. First of all, I'm 100% support our band. I know for years we've gotten ones under all of our directors and I just looked at this and I just, $575 is a hard fee for a parent to come up with to go on a band trip. And when you look at the amount of band stuff they have, what I could see is a band performance at noon and they have to catch a bus at 12:30 according to this itinerary. And then you have a band coming from 10, they have to catch a bus at 11:15. And then you have a band coming from 10, they have to catch a bus at 11:15. And I, having, when my kids are in band, as a single mom, 575 dollars plus four additional meals, would have been tight, so is this like a mandatory thing for these kids? Is this an elective trip for these kids? If a kid can't go, is he, does he have help, he or she, the student, have help getting the money? I mean, it's already October and this is in March and just for a family to save money for that. I just, I support the band, support all the band things they do, but this is just, and I guess I'd like Ms. Keller, Ms. Hunt, Ms. Lilly, if someone shared these experiences with us and bring a couple of students, how would benefit them? When you look at the itinerary, there's very little to do with band. And Toronto's a great, I've never been there, a great field trip to go to, great trip to go to. So I just, I just wanted to share those things that you guys. And then if they want to go on this play, they want to go on to this play to go to a musical, is that included in the 575 or is that in addition to 575? So I just had questions about this.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's included in the.
Because it says, we hope to secure tickets. And if the ticket price is included in the 575, when they don't secure the tickets, do they get the money back?
It's a, it's a Toronto souvenir for musical theater shows.
Yeah. So that I was holding.
Right, so I don't think they care, yeah, and they wouldn't offer that if it wasn't.
I guess I'm trying to figure out how you can do a band performance at noon and have to be on a bus at 12:30.
I would say that you're bringing up some good questions, but I'd also say that Dan and Lori have been doing this for their entire career and, and most families and the students getting into band usually have a pretty good idea what's ahead of them, the money that's involved and the travel's very demanding, extracurricular. So I have faith, you know, in probably what they put together, if they pulled it off or, I don't even know how long Dan's been doing this, maybe it's like a well-built machine, so.
I mean, I have a good, I mean, my kids went to Bay Harbor Band in ninth and 10th grade and I remember I worked like this, well, that was 80, 10 years ago. And maybe I just chose them to have to go for financial reasons or other reasons. But I remember band camp, now they went to go to band camp in August and it was in the, band camp was in the old football or baseball field, three nights a week when Mr. Davis was there. It wasn't an overnight band camp for five days at a, I don't know.
On the flip side, this is a great opportunity to, for live members who aspire to travel, might not ever get to see Toronto, might not get to go see a professional performance that they might inspire them and use it and perform it, so I think these are good experiences for young people and we should, but to your point, maybe they're going to, is there financial help for students that can't afford it or can, you know, what's being done if people can't, can't go? I think that that's the point.
My daughter went on a seventh grade trip to Canada, I think it was like 40 hours, which is for a week, but it was a class experience, I mean, she loved it, absolutely.
I'm just.
I know the band is a lot of hungry search, so you know, I wonder.
These are a great opportunity, but a good point.
Questions I have that I need to ask.
The money, you deal with people that might need some assistance.
But keep it, this is a pretty great trip, we're not taking anybody out of school.
No, no.
I mean, this is to be no different than the Spanish club in Puerto Rico, which is 10 times the price.
More elaborate, but, but the timeframe is a little bit different too.
Well, I support the band, I just think there are questions getting asked.
I can hear you, I think to Mike's point though, this is not, we're missing a week of class where the entire trip is going to be academic in nature, there are some fun things the kids participate and be a part of and it's pretty great, so.
Yeah, that, that was an issue, it was just the price and.
And it also has fundraisers as part of their, I think it's, so they, and it's only 45, male and female, so that's not the entire band, it's students who choose to go. So it's not, it wouldn't be considered a requirement, but it certainly is an opportunity like going to New York and seeing Broadway play or going to fashion and watching all those who've done all those things for students, it's opportunities that they can utilize if they have the opportunity. You want to work, you can earn 575 dollars before March.
Well, and I think in terms of opportunities for kids too, I mean, I'm looking at this itinerary.
I saw it, I'm like, I kind of went down.
Anybody lucky enough to go to Toronto and go to most of these places, I didn't do it for 575, I can tell you that. This is a really good deal for these guys and not everybody can afford it.
That's true. And Jan, with really specific questions about the itinerary, just for future reference would help, would help me a lot if you've got these questions beforehand, so I could come and inform you with the answers for you, that way you're not asked to vote on something that you don't have answers to, that's not very you, but I want to be able to say, hey, this is exactly the, you need answers, I agree.
Well, and the other point I would make, it's great, this company's been allowing a lot of transplanting large groups of students, small groups of students, so I mean, if anybody's the expert.
But I'm going to talk to Jan and Lori about all these questions.
Can't we just, just learn about, just sort of turn them on and students attend what they have out of it in future?
I was going to tell them, thank you, because I'll tell you, there's two people about in the, you know, they're always doing something.
They really gross a passport if you, if you're Canadian trip, there's prescriptions.
Just like Costa Rica, great part, they did a great job, that way covering the base and 24 no passports recovered.
And they do payment plans, which is really, they do automatic payment plans.
Oh, right.
They made you pay by a certain. So it's really, really awesome. But my daughter's a D teacher and that's a cost, but yeah, let me tell you about that security.
But I will get these answers to the territory.
So.
It's not like we pull our consent group apart.
There's typically no discussion.
Right, and send groups, so we pull our consent group apart, I don't know, we've used, you've made the motion though.
I mean, it was supported.
So we can go.
Pull up.
Mrs. Bebar.
Yes.
Mr. Noah.
Hi.
Mr. Noah.
Hi.
Mrs. Byer.
Hi.
Mrs. Becker.
Hi.
Mrs. Bush.
Hi.
Michelle's design, whatever that was. That takes us to board member communications, learning communications from the board.
I just want to thank Schickler for all you do, I had, I had a community member say, I can't believe they turned those, those results around and I'm like, how'd they do that? And like the teachers and the principals, they love the kids there and say, thank you for coming and staying. And just congratulations to the football team, they're six and zero, so that's pretty exciting.
Like a ball, school community.
It was awesome.
I have a teaser, Matt, is it, I won't say what's coming from, I think a group that you're the head of these days, but it's going to be exciting and a welcome addition, but I guess until it's in place, we probably shouldn't say anything.
The part?
No, I'm thinking of the, it's just, stay tuned. That was a teaser. There's something good coming. Something good, I guess I should verify that before I say.
I guess we should.
Yeah, it's another, it's another service group partnership with our district and some other folks here in town that will be an amazing impact for the kids in our community. It's, it's, it's just big stuff, I mean, you're going to love it, we're going to love it. So, but Scott again, thank you, you know, he's such a slacker. Then Murphy, they were outstanding, Turrell, they were outstanding, and Schickler, they're outstanding. You look around and you start to see very quickly that there is a common thread and a common denominator, so thank you very much Scott for me.
Sorry to find you, David. Any other? That's it, all I need to say today, I think, and that's enough. More coming.
I'll make a motion to the chair.
Sport.
Motion to the chair.
Yeah.
Hi.
Byer.
Hi. So, Kay, you're going to laugh, I was going to continue to get that on.